regime of the irregular and inconsistent director. SSA rents the pavilion for two reasons. One, to be in city compliance so that alcohol may be legally and responsibly consumed by persons over 21 after the chief of police has signed off on the agreement form. And two, we invite other nonprofits to host a barbecue for their fundraising efforts during games at no cost to them for pavilion space. Groups in the past have been the swim club, Boys and Girls Club, high school volleyball team, and the Girl Scouts. We also provide a barbecue and propane for these groups to use. Last year, with sports shut down at schools or school events limited, some of these groups weren't able to fundraise at all. SSA charges players and team fees to cover the costs of a softball season along with some sponsorship money from local businesses. There's quite a bit more, I'm not going to be able to.
I think that was distributed to us.
Okay, next one is Lori Lanstrom. I am speaking on behalf of myself and Sustainable Seward. Sustainable Seward is the local sustainability and recycling group. I would like to speak in support of electric vehicle fast charging stations in Seward. Mr. Montgomery will speak to them in his electric department report. I fully support the city working with the Chamber and any other businesses that want to put in EV fast charging stations. I encourage the city to seek out partners for a station in the harbor area and the downtown area. I am aware of the charging station in the North Harbor Boat Ramp area. Owners of electric vehicles will come to Seward when they know they can recharge quickly while enjoying our town and spending money here. Wouldn't it be fabulous if Seward had four EV charging stations? The funding, though the Volkswagen Environmental Mitigation Trust pays 80% of the first million dollars, what a great deal. Let's not be left out. Please support financially and in kind and encourage EV fast charging stations to be installed in Seward. Next is Sheri Edelman. As a past long-term Seward Parks and Rec Department employee and a current SSA board member, I'm writing to ask for your support of Resolution 21-36. In 2018, a group of committed volunteers organized SSA in response to the need for a better-run softball league. For years, SPRD ran a successful league, but then over time it suffered. In my opinion, this was due to the loss of several key employees, high turnover of the sports coordinator position, and lack of training and mentorship for the temporary employees. SSA had successfully hosted two years of both D and E League softball, invitational softball tournaments, and end-of-season tournaments, as well as several fall and winter seasons of the popular cornhole league and various cornhole tournaments. All these leagues and tournaments were hosted by community volunteers. I believe SSA's involvement has been a win-win for the community and the city, allowing the city to save money, time, and resources. With SSA hosting the league, the city saves up to 200 hours in staffing for game nights alone, which is several thousands of dollars. This does not include cost of administration, employee benefits, insurance equipment, safety supplies, fees, team and player registrations, umpire training and certification, scheduling, et cetera. With my past involvement with the Alaska Recreation and Parks Association, I was able to speak with others in the field regarding their collaboration with nonprofits running various events and programs. To have a qualified group continue to run a league that was previously offered by the city just makes sense. The city waiving the fees for the use of the fields and the pavilion would be in line with other statewide agency agreements and would assure the start of a beneficial partnership between the city and SSA. Thank you for your support of this resolution. And then we will be calling Pat Dimitrovich.
This is Pat.
Pat, you are with City Council and you have three minutes for citizen comments.
Okay, I assume that everybody saw my letter of interest, I hope. The reason I'm interested in the position is I would like to give back to the state of Alaska, the Prince William Sound. I've been in Alaska since 1987, lived in Chugak for 27 years, worked for Chugak Electric for 29 years, and now in Seward. And I spend a lot of time on the Sound and it's fun. And there's a lot of good things out there and I want to give back to the community. And I think this is an opportunity for me to do that. I'm particularly interested in promoting the neon art galleries. I've had my family out there and it's a lot of fun. And Longview Island is a lot of fun. So there's a lot of good things out there. And environmentally, I think it can be a sensitive place and I'm aware of that. And I just, you know, think I can give back to the community and get to the point in my life where it's time to give back a little bit and that's what I want to do. So that's all I have to say about that, yes?
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
And then we have two people with their hand up. The first is Linda Paquette.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
We can hear you.
Okay, I just wanted to say I'm really disappointed with what's in the Public Works manager's report. When you've got a facility that's in disrepair and broken and impacting people's lives by emitting noxious smells, it seems like it would be appropriate for it to be in the report with, even if all it says is what it said last month, you know, which is we're waiting on spring the melt or whatever, but for it not to even be in there just seems like a real omission and it allows people to forget what you've got going on out there, which is a disaster, right? So that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then the next is Bear Lake Lodgings, which I'm not exactly sure who that is. Hello, can you hear us?
There we go, I was muted, sorry very much. This is Patricia Perry. I'm owner of Bear Lake Lodgings with my husband Dennis Perry, but I'm also the owner of the original gourmet ice cream bars. And I participated last year with the city on one of the city vending lots. I am the one that brought before up to Tony about changing the vending applications process that is on the agenda for this evening. And I just wanted to put in my two cents about the issue. And I have been a vendor in Alaska since 1983, it's almost getting to be 40 years. And the Seward city is the only one that doesn't really recognize grandfather rights to their vendors. And as a partner with the city, I would like to be considered as able to return as long as I followed all the rules and be allowed that grace period to have my space granted to me for the next year as would other vendors. It also helps with us to be able to get loans from improvements, to do better job of selling in the city. The State Fair, an Alaska State Fair about 15 years ago, the Vendors Association, which I've been very active with over the years, managed to do a similar situation where we had a guaranteed right of return so that we could do improvements on our businesses and banks would be able to recognize that. So I just hope that the City Council is willing to work with their vendor partners to help us be better business partners with you two. Anyway, that's my comment.
Great, thank you.
Looks like we don't have anyone else.
Next on the agenda is the approval of the Agenda and Consent Agenda, and I'm looking for a motion in a second.
I move for the approval of the Agenda and Consent Agenda.
A secondary.
Thank you. I have notes from administration for a couple things. They've asked me to strike Resolution 2021-032 from the Agenda, so stricken off the Agenda. And then also strike 2021-030, so those are both public hearing items that are just being fully taken off the Agenda. And then I would like to also add, under Proclamations and Awards, we have Seward Day proclamation. I'd like to add, just following the City Manager's Report, a Mayor's Report, I just have a couple things to inform the whole body about. And then finally, if I could take Resolution 2021-035, 2021-036 off the Consent Agenda, and then also the appointment to the Prince William Sound Regional Citizens Advisory Council, if I could take that off the Consent Agenda also. And then I'll check with Councilmember Sees, do you have any changes or do you have any amendments to the Agenda, ma'am?
No, you pulled the ones I wanted to pull. Thank you.
And then I'll look around the diocese, Councilmember Casagrande?
I'd like to ask, as a point of order, just how the order will go, Northern Edge is going to be giving us a presentation. Will we have appearing to be able to ask questions after that presentation?
I think, if you have further questions, you're welcome. We'll make sure there's time for questions. We'll give him a full 10 minutes for his presentation and then following that, that will include council comments or questions.
Okay, thank you.
Any other qualifications, amendments? Madam Clerk, I think we're ready for a vote on the Agenda.
Voting on tonight's Agenda and Consent Agenda. Hosenga?
Yes.
McClaire?
Yes.
Casagrande?
Yes.
Demas?
Yes.
Sees?
Yeah.
Baklon?
Yes.
Mayor Terry?
Yes.
Your Agenda and Consent Agenda are approved and approved on tonight's Consent Agenda. Resolution 2021-033 approving mid-cycle budget amendment in the amount of $3,377 for absentee by mail election supplies and appropriating funds. Resolution 2021-034 authorizing signatures for all city bank accounts and rescinding all previous resolutions in conflict herewith. And you have approved the March 8, 2021 City Council regular meeting minutes.
Next on the Agenda is Proclamations and Awards, and we do have one proclamation, so I'll have you come up just so everyone can see your lovely face, or happier face. Thank you for joining us, this is the Chair of the Minnesota Preservation Commission. And I'll go ahead and read the proclamation, you can't see it, but it has a beautiful picture of William Seward on here. So whereas on March 30, 1867, the then-Secretary of State William H. Seward signed the Alaska Purchase Treaty, and whereas this treaty negotiated the purchase of Alaska from Russia, and whereas it was proclaimed by the state of Alaska that this day be celebrated on the last Monday of March each year, and whereas this day is of special importance to the city of Seward as this city was named in honor of William H. Seward, and whereas in March 1903, John E. Valane, one of the founders of this city, bestowed the name Seward upon this site because he foresaw the potential for great economic growth for this port city, just as William H. Seward saw the potential of great economic growth in the purchase of Alaska. Now therefore I, Kristy Terry, Mayor of the city of Seward, Alaska, do hereby proclaim Monday, March 29, 2021 as Seward Day. And I will give you this proclamation and ask you if you have a couple words to share.
Thank you, Mayor Terry. I proudly accept this on behalf of the Seward Reserve Preservation Commission. And in addition to thanking Secretary Seward for his wisdom, I thank President Lincoln for a subway and a great cabinet. Thank you.
That's me. Thank you. Next on the Agenda is the City Manager's Report, and for the public and council, that starts on page four, and I'll turn that over to Administration.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So start off with some POs since the last meeting. And so for parking, it's the recurring annual fees for the pay stations, it's $5,225. And for the police, ammunition for the police department is $5,644. The library, the OCLC Group Contract Services for 2021 is $5,500. And the IT department for two terabytes hard drives for the backup server is $6,474. And I'll take any questions.
Councilmember Sees, I'll start with you and see if you have any questions regarding the Manager's Report.
No, I did have one. What is the OCLC? What's that stand for?
Norm's chuckling because he's getting stumped.
We'll follow up with that and get it back to you.
Okay, thank you.
Did you have a follow-up question, Councilmember Sees?
No, I don't, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Casagrande, see your hand raised.
I have four questions.
You can go through them off.
Okay, thank you. So the first question is an update. If you have any updates with communication with our lobbyists and any possible infrastructure funding that may be coming down the pipe.
So the only infrastructure funding that we know of coming down is the one, there was the GO bond, we're not sure what our state legislation is going through whether or not, depending what they're going to do with the federal funding they got, they might use the federal funding instead of the GO bond funding for infrastructure. I mean, that's all we know of right now, it's just depending how they're writing it up, how that money can be used. But if it can't be used for infrastructure, then I imagine the governor will probably go back with the GO bond.
Okay, thank you. My next question is, do you have an update? I know that Public Works was doing the audit that we had instructed and they were reporting that they were doing it. Is that the water one complete? And I think that the electricity was never done because you guys found that you had pictures of all the meter installations.
Correct. So the water ones, I know they're continuing to work on it. As the businesses show back up for the season, they'll get in there to do those and check all those. But I believe all the businesses that are open, they've been checked and they're making notes of it all. And on the electric side, they do have pictures of all that, but all, I know that you asked about the demand meters and all the meters should be replaced as of 11 more that I know they're working on, they had to order, should be in place either this week or they got finished last week. But we didn't get a report on them being finished, I imagine they're going to finish them up this week.
Okay.
So I might just follow up and just say, could we have, so it's three weeks till the next council meeting, could we have an update by then, either to council or it would be nice to have it included? And if it isn't done in three weeks, Councilmember Casagrande, maybe just a note when it's going to be ready for us?
Sure.
So I just, the water probably won't be complete, but we can get you updated what we have.
Okay. And then just one more thing in my brainstorming of that whole water meter audit, I think it's really important that Public Works has access to utility billings' bills. So they have a stack of business bills that they need to go visit every single site and either check. Is this building on ERUs and how big is it? Is it being charged one ERU? And it's a big, huge building, maybe this isn't right, right? Or is there a water meter in here and they're being charged ERUs, but they should be on a water meter? So I think just sending Public Works out to randomly go check the list that they already have, that doesn't cover potential water meters that are not even on their list, that aren't even being read.
So I know that if it doesn't have a water meter, I believe when the fire department does inspection of businesses, they should know the ERUs. But I, we can look into it, but I just, I don't see the water department going through somebody's building, looking how many rooms or whatever. I think that would be the fire department, it's a combination between fire and the water department. If it doesn't have a meter, then they should know what the building is. But we'll look into it.
Okay. The only, sorry, the one thing that has recently come to my attention is there may be one business that has multiple meters. And unless you have that stack of bills, you don't know what you're looking for. So I think it's really important that whoever's looking for those has access to the bills so they know how many electric meters or how many buildings they're supposed to be looking for at one site or under one business.
Okay.
And then that just leads me into the next question of, if we could also get an update, I think we made a recommendation or asked for utility billing to audit a month or two of their own, if that's complete yet? You don't have to answer right now, just meet with the next meeting.
I think that, I thought we were doing it as part of the audit because we asked them to do double.
Okay. I'll meet with you later. I thought that, yeah. Thank you.
Do you have another question, Councilmember?
That's it, thank you.
Are there any other questions specific to Manager's Report? Yes?
I was just wondering, I don't, maybe this isn't the right time to ask, but do we know or have we discussed when we'll open meetings for public again?
That's a great question. I was actually going to bring that up to my comments, but I think this is a, do you mind if we discuss this?
Go ahead, Madam Mayor.
I'm sure you guys have the same question. What are your thoughts?
I mean, I feel like once the vaccines are available for everybody, then I feel like it's kind of time to maybe open things up again. So I feel like we're nearing that time. That's just my personal opinion, and I know there's people that want to come.
Do you mind, Administration, you open?
Yes, Madam Mayor, so we did have it last Wednesday, open meetings, and it seemed to be fine. I think we should open it back up to the public and get public back in here. And we can still distance like we started, you know, when COVID started, the people lining up in the hallways and coming in. I think, I think we should be able to go that route, but.
Are there any objections? I think I'm all for it also, but I just want to clarify. So what that means is then we go back to our previous historical of people can either come in person and testify or submit written comments, and that's what we do. There's no more Zoom. We could just open meetings and go back to the historical, go ahead.
I did hear from a constituent that still does not feel comfortable being in public and does want access to that Zoom. So is there, can we do a transition period where it's open maybe just for like another month of Zoom and then like give them?
Transition's not a bad idea. How many people do we have on Zoom right now?
Well, you have me.
There's one caller, one caller. We have about two.
Two, okay, Council.
I would say that I'm all for going back to open for the public to be here. I would just say if we do it safely and we social distance and that's great, hopefully we can do it that way. But yeah, that's not a bad, bad idea.
I'd like to suggest also if we do that, that people wear masks and distance, but I'm all for getting people back here. I think we had very few people, actually hardly anybody on Wednesday, but we've been wanting this for some time. Also, I'm curious, how much does it cost us for Zoom to have a technician here every meeting for all these hours? Is there an extra cost? And there must be, I mean, just approximate.
Well, I mean, I'm an exempt employee, so.
So he's an exempt employee, but does Zoom does cost so much per month?
We pay roughly $1,900 for the year, so.
But for like the other meetings, his other two employees are hourly, so they charge overtime.
Okay, so there is a cost if it's not.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, and we would also continue with you two, we'd continue.
Oh, yeah.
So folks could watch on YouTube and submit written comments, correct? Do we want to have a hybrid the next meeting and then go back to normal?
Hyb-
Like a hybrid with one last Zoom and in person for that first meeting in April and then that second meeting, which would give a lot of people the two weeks to have the two vaccines if they choose. Vice Mayor?
Does that mean they will come and join us on the diocese now so we can have more space for?
Oh, yeah.
For?
Yeah, but I think we're still trying to social distance.
So I'm just wondering, how many people would it provide access to?
So I think then that's what they were talking about, so people could wait in the hall. And you know, we can even move that food table out and space out the chairs. Councilmember Casagrande?
Do we have a speaker out in the hall?
That's what I was going to suggest, that we get a speaker out there. We can move a speaker in the hall.
Okay.
Because it's hard to hear out there.
Right.
So it gives us three weeks to get ready for the first one, just have it be Zoom and in person, and then that second meeting in April, go back to our normal. Any objections? Is that, Madam Clerk, is following COVID recommendations, is that clear enough direction? Are there any further questions or?
I'll work with the IT director and we'll make it happen.
Administration, any?
No, I think we got it. We'll get the speaker put out there for the folks out there. And yeah, it'd be nice.
Councilmember Demas, do you have any follow-ups or any additional questions?
Sounds great, thank you.
Just wondering how that affects the boards and the commissions.
They normally pattern after us, so we could just have them, their first meeting of next month and then their second is normally a work session and they can go back to their normal practice? Is there any objections to that?
I think they're all kind of gearing up to be, anyway.
Hybrid first meeting and then after normal second meeting? And that'll get the word out. Go ahead, Councilmember Sees, go ahead.
So when it, you said $1,900 a year, have we paid for a bunch for this year more than what we have right now, I mean, meetings?
Yes, we have paid for the entire year.
Which we might just-
Then why do we have to go off of Zoom?
Councilmember Casagrande?
So I'll just interact with her. I mean, I personally am okay for a mask on for about an hour, but if we're going to require masks, I would rather Zoom in just because I don't like breathing suffocated. So if we've already paid for Zoom, I don't see why we couldn't continue it either unless there's an objection.
Well, I guess I have an objection if we're going to be open just for the ease and the communication within the meeting would be my thing. It, you know, I would prefer to see people in person and I don't know how it is for you, but I know I interrupt people on Zoom. So it'd just be more communication and the ease of the meeting for me. Councilmember Demas?
Do we have to require masks? Most people wear them, I think, anyway.
It's recommended.
Can we recommend it?
I would rather have masks. I'd rather be safe, actually.
Okay, I have another thing then, Mayor. If they are going to be on it, it doesn't mean we still can't have people in the audience sitting out there, even if you're on Zoom.
Yeah. My preference would be to get off of Zoom. Just again, we have, you know, an IT person here, I wonder if his time would be better spent during the day doing other projects for IT. So while that's not a cost to his salary, you know, I'm sure either he needs to take that time during the other part of his work week, even if he's exempt, or, you know, it's not really fair to that employee to expect over 40 hours a week. Since there's not full agreement, do we need to have something on that April 13 meeting and then go through and we can just vote some of the finer points through? Councilmember Casagrande?
The reason I was going to suggest that is I'd like to give the public some time to be able to weigh in because, you know, ultimately I think what we're discussing is what's comfortable for the public and we as public servants should be able to accommodate. I know that we're going to get all kinds of different things from probably, you know, it's probably going to be just as conflicted as everything, but it'll be- it's probably going to be just as conflicted as everything, but it'll be good to have that input and give some time. So if we can keep this discussion to the next meeting, that would be great.
So Madam Clerk, could you write up an agenda statement with maybe all the points that we need to consider? And maybe get input from council on, I mean, masks, following CDC requirement, masks and social distancing, Zoom, public comments, and then we can get, get the public's take on it and then also maybe vote some of the finer points?
Yes.
I have one other question, Christie. You said that in our meeting is on the thirteenth of April, that's Tuesday?
Okay, then the twelfth. I just keep saying the wrong date. It's going to be Monday, it's going to be that Monday.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. First meeting in April. Any further questions for administration? Okay, next on the agenda is I added a mayor's report. I just want to let the council know that, um, the lobbyists set up meetings for administration and the mayor to meet with Senator Machiki and also Representative Ben Carpenter, and the lobbyist was there. What we did was we went through our capital budget account summary that, um, we voted on, um, for our state priorities. Um, they asked us to talk about, uh, they did, we went through all of them and then we talked about our top three, which, which, um, had to do with, uh, upgrading the transmission and substation transformers, design and rebuild from the electric transmission line from Seward Highway to SMIC, and then design, engineering and construction of the public workshops. So those are all things that, um, council did vote on. And I might say that in the past, we have made it a point to just do bullet points and not put it in an order. However, we need to remember for next year, they specifically want an order. So that's something that we really need to take care of, um, you know, during a meeting so that everyone's on the same page. This order was, um, more developed based on what they saw for infrastructure and what people were, um, you know, what funding was going to be available for. And then going back to Councilmember Causa Grande's question, I just wanted to share what is in the current, um, GO bond. And, um, we were assured that even if the GO bond doesn't go, if there's, um, infrastructure money, then these projects could be funded that way. And this isn't anything that we, um, provided. These are just projects in our area. So the first was there's nineteen million, five hundred thousand dollars in APTAX center upgrades and that's, um, put into that GO bond. There's that Fairbanks to Seward multi-use recreation route and that, well, that's not just for Seward, that starts here and moves up to Fairbanks, and that's thirteen million, two hundred thousand. And then the last, um, one that is specific to Seward is the, um, municipal harbor grant program. And I don't know what, what the my outpost it starts at.
Okay.
Coming into the base here and then going across to SMIC. It's all.
The second one.
So the first one is to SMIC and then the next one's across to SMIC? Or the first one's to Fort Raymond?
Right. The first one's down.
Right. It's Fort Raymond and also going towards SMIC. And then all the, the other part is the infrastructure for the substation to cross and then all the, all the stuff on the poles that needs to be replaced along the way, that's with the second one. So we kind of hopefully can combine the two. And I know that Rob is working on it and he will get something for you for the next meeting.
Thank you.
Or we can get something sent out right away, whichever we, you would like.
Next meeting's fine. I'm just curious. I'd just like to see an update because I heard some conflicting, you know, it's Seward, it's a small town, so I just want to hear it from the, you two. Yes, please.
And I think these were on our state, I mean, these, we did vote on these under state priorities.
Absolutely.
Okay, next on the agenda is the Chamber of Commerce report.
All right, Madam Mayor, councilmembers, uh, good evening, everybody. Good to see you all. I will, this is pretty brief because I do know that you have a number of presentations tonight. So you guys have my report, which I'll have to answer any questions on. But I'm also, I just want to let you guys know that some of the early indicators this year is that we're going to have a good summer, uh, talking with a lot of excursions. They're booking, um, higher than pre-COVID twenty, like pre-COVID twenty twenty levels, but sometimes higher than two thousand and nineteen levels for this time of year, um, which is really good to hear. Talking with Major Marine, I know that their gray whale tours and KFT, their gray whale tours are, are pretty busy, talking with hacking excursions. They are looking to be kind of understaffed for what they were projected for. And so these are good problems to have. It creates other problems as far as staffing goes, but it's just good to hear that people are wanting to travel. And, um, we're already seeing a lot of people kind of come in earlier in visitor's center than they normally do. And so, um, so we kind of hope things continue in that, in that direction, in that trend. But that's the one note that I wanted to add and I'm happy to answer any questions on my report.
Um, the Fourth of July Mount Marathon race is still on the seventh of July?
Uh, the race is on the seventh and the Fourth of July festivities will still be like the first through the fifth.
Okay, so there was a statement before that you were going to make a definitive statement about whether the race would be held or not on the first of June? That was some reports back. Is it for sure going to be held in your mind?
Yes. Yep.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So were all the funds spent from that, um, uh, February fourteenth weekend the grant program?
No, we are, we just finalized kind of the, the two rounds of checks that we sent out, we, receipts going through our admin costs. And so there will be some money left over. And so we're going to look at that when we finalize that money, we're going to look at what else we can do and kind of in a timely manner. It's harder to work with a little bit smaller pool of money, um, but we are going to plan on doing something similar and creative in that direction, so.
Then my last question was, I saw the AEV, uh, charging stations.
Mm-hmm.
So are you doing that through a grant program or how are those happening?
I'm doing that with, uh, partnering with the city, actually. Uh, Rob and I have been working together on that. And, um, so yeah, we're just going to put some charging stations at the chamber there and some fast charging stations. And so yeah, it's just been a partnership with Rob and I going through that together and, um, going through that process and figuring out how it works and being on calls. And, um, so I guess I would say it's definitely, it's a partnership on that front.
Okay, Councilmember Sees, did you have any questions for the chamber director?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the illustrious Tim Dillon, the Kenai Peninsula Economic Development District presentation. Welcome.
Thank you. Before we get started, I wanted to, uh, just make sure you know that, uh, from the, the GO bond standpoint and things, I, uh, as normal, I get contacted by the legislature on some of those different things in the governor's office. And I actually testified on behalf of Seward here two weeks ago, I guess it was, to, uh, Senate Transportation on a couple of different pieces that are out there, so. And, uh, unlike your lobbyist, you don't get a bill from me. So, thank you all for, uh, letting me visit with you today. I, uh, came into town yesterday and had a variety of meetings today and then met with the chamber and did a chamber presentation at noon and then met with some more folks this afternoon. So it's been a very, very productive day, day and a half, uh, for me. Next slide. We always have this slide in our presentations to remind everybody that I love visiting Seward. But as you can see, it's a rather large area that I have to go visit all the time, whether it be up in Hope or Nanawalik, Port Graham, Tionneka, the rest of, uh, the entire Kenai Peninsula. Next slide. Reminder of who we are, um, and this is something that we keep making sure that people understand. We are not government. We are a private, non-government resource. Um, and it's been really interesting dealing with, uh, between the governor's office and I actually, uh, met with the head of Ada last week. And, uh, making sure that they understand that one of the reasons, because it was questioned how we could bring in all the money that we brought in since last March. Per capita, we've brought in more money on the Kenai Peninsula than any other region in the state of Alaska. When you look at the Alaska CARES was forty-nine million six. Um, the amount of municipal relief that went out to, uh, different, uh, directly to businesses was another, uh, twenty-some million. Um, and then when you throw PPP and EIDL, EIDL in there, you're talking about a hundred and ninety-eight million that we were able to bring in since last March. So one of the things that we've told the governor's office and, and others that keep asking us is being a non-government resource, I have an awesome board, you know? In fact, John is on it and I appreciate his help and support. My board meets five times a year for one hour each time they meet. As I've told them, if we need to meet more often, they need to fire my ass. So it makes it a lot easier for us to deal with things because I can just get things done and I don't have to notice a meeting or get a variety of different people's approval. So I wanted to make sure that you're all aware of that because that, that's, that's why we've had the success that we've had with, with this stuff. And I don't see that changing either. Next slide. What I'm here to talk to you about tonight is a comprehensive economic development strategy. You do this every five years and then we update it once a year, uh, just to make sure that we're all on track with things. The biggest thing that it does is it opens federal funding opportunities. So when you think about the earthquake a couple of years ago, the only place the federal money could be spent was up in the valley, Anchorage, or here on the Kenai Peninsula. But part of the restrictions was you had to have a SEDs on file with the federal government in order to handle the money. Well, the valley does not have an economic development organization. Anchorage was having, let's just say, a little spat between themselves as far as whether to approve it or not approve it. So we're the only ones that had it on file. So I know I was questioned by a variety of people wanting to know what was I doing helping John Moosie up in the valley with trying to get, uh, schools rebuilt and, you know, variety of places and things. And that is because of our, um, federal designation and that we do have things on file. Next slide. So what we've been doing is we've been doing outreach, uh, and planning. We started this back July first, uh, and visited with a variety of people. We've had over fifteen hundred touches of different people, whether it be within, um, incorporated communities or just other groups and, and things to visit with. Next slide. We've tried to make presentations and more than anything else, engagement. I can tell you, after my presentation this, uh, this afternoon with the chamber, and I had said I will probably get two or three emails from people listening to the presentation, making sure that I was following up on some things. And lo and behold, I got four emails from the chamber. So that's, that's great. That's what we need. We need that engagement. And I'm hoping whether somebody is watching online or any of you folks have, uh, questions or concerns, that you make sure that you go ahead and, uh, let me know. Next slide. So we've reached out to all the different industry groups and, you know, one of the things with the Kenai Peninsula is we're so diverse. So, you know, we've got gas and oil, but it's not like the borough, uh, or like, uh, like Barrow. We have, uh, commercial fishing, but it's not like, you know, the, the folks over in the Bering Sea. We have tourism, but it's not like southeast. So you take all the different things that we're able to balance and it really helps us an awful lot. So we've been listening to a lot of those people, wanting to know, okay, what do you want to make sure that we look for over the next five years? What's important? We did a SWOT analysis. We hired the, um, University of Alaska, the Center for Economic Development, um, because as you all know, there's only four of my staff, including myself. So we, uh, we hired them to assist us with analyzing some of the information and all. And we did a typical SWOT analysis, looking at strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats. Next slide. Part of what we did was we used a, a computer program. So as we were going out and talking to folks, they were able to punch in different areas. So this is one of the strengths of the Kenai Peninsula. And you'll notice all of these are in around the same size, okay? But there's a variety of different things, whether it be in good schools or Alaska's vacation spot, you know, civic organizations, things of that nature. If we go to the next slide, this is the weaknesses. And as you can see, um, the one in the middle was mentioned more than once or twice or eight or nine or ten times, and that's broadband. And that is definitely one of the goals and one of the things that we're working on. The rest of them, there's a variety of weaknesses that we'll make sure that it's, they're placed underneath our, our five goals. Next slide. The other one, uh, as far as opportunities, was public transportation. This is something that I promised the assembly that I will continue to take a hard look at and see what we could do to help. And that's not just in Kenai and Saldatna. That's Hope, that's Cooper Landing, that's Seward, that's Homer, all the other areas. We've got to figure something out for public transportation. Next slide. What threats are out there? There's a variety of different things, whether it be the, um, fisheries, uh, drugs and crime, state budgets, things of that nature that we all have to be aware of. On top of that, what we did was we drilled down. So it wasn't just one word or two words. So you'll see a whole list of things that are identified as strengths on the, on the Kenai Peninsula. Next, same thing is the weaknesses. Opportunities and threats. We've taken all of these and what we've done is if you look at the next slide, we have looked at our overarching goal is quality of living. That is what we continue to hear from people over and over again. And one of the things that we're really happy with is we continue to see in migration. One of the only places in the state of Alaska that continues to see in migration. And most of the people that are moving to the Kenai Peninsula are moving from somewhere else in Alaska. So we've got a couple of different projects we're working on to try and help with that, but we're going to continue to develop the Kenai Peninsula brand, not only for our residents, but visitors, businesses, um, and promoting the ex- expansion of recreational amenities like this long trail that we're working on with state parks that would go from Seward up to Fairbanks. Next slide, please. Then we have five goals. And when you take these five goals, all of your projects, we need to make sure they can fit under these five. And as we look at things, we believe that these five will get it done. Next slide. What's our timeline? We're in the process right now of doing presentations like this, getting out there, visiting with, with folks. We should have our draft complete by the beginning of April. Then we'll have it out for comment during April and May. And then we'll, uh, send our final document into the federal government, hopefully by the end of June. Next slide. Why have a SEDs? I mentioned about the earthquake, you know, the wildfires, the pandemic, even little things like when the Alaska Railroad Corpse, um, Corporation, when they went after their, uh, improvement project and their grant. For us to be able to write a letter of support and be able to identify that it's in our comprehensive economic development strategy is a huge help. So when people are looking for funding, one of the things they do is they come to us going and, and looking at putting in, in some kind of a letter of help and support. Next slide. Broadband, I'm involved in a lot of different conversations with broadband. I'm actually working with, the governor has an individual that's just dedicated to broadband. I believe within the next eighteen to twenty-four months, you're going to see a significant change in broadband on the Kenai Peninsula. Just keep the faith and it, it's going to happen. We're working closely with the Denali Commission. I know periodically you're seeing some things in the newspaper. I apologize, I can't talk publicly about a lot of what we've got going on. Next slide, please. There's lots of different challenges on the peninsula. Erosion's one of the biggest ones. One of the things that we're working on right now is we actually, um, through the governor's office and Launch Alaska, we were approached by a scientist from Lower Forty-Eight who thinks he's got some ideas on how to help with erosion. So we took a look at three different areas. We took a look down here in Seward, um, over in, uh, the Kenai and also over in Homer. And it looks like this project is going to be tested down in Homer on the spit. It's a substance that they use that they're going to try and see whether they can prevent, uh, erosion. And Brian and, and the folks down in Homer are very excited about it. But, uh, again, you know, as we're working through some of these things, yeah, I'll talk to your administration about it, but again, we keep it on the QT on, on some of these things. I, I can't have them in the public before we were able to make that, those decisions. Next slide. You've got a lot of projects that are on your lists right now in your capital improvement plan. But I can tell you, every one of those things that are on your plan for twenty, uh, twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, one way or the other, I can get them into our five goals and I don't have a problem with that at all. And that's what the key is. The, you know, my goal is not to try and see, you know, how far down in the weeds I can get. It's the overarching pieces are what we're looking for. And then when we write the letter, when we make the phone calls, when we have, you know, Congressman Young in our office or, or Senator Murkowski or, or Machiki or somebody, I'm able to talk details with them. And that's what's really important. And that's what's really important. What can you do? Things like this, allowing me to come and talk and presenting. And I am serious. Any of you, when you get done, you all have my email address. If you've got ideas, things you want me to make sure that I include, go ahead and, or if you think of a project and you're like, how is he going to stick that under these five goals? How does that work? Give me a call or shoot me an email, and I'll let you know. But making sure that there's participation in the community, especially when we go ahead and send out the draft, the final draft, come the end of April. Next slide. You know, it's important for us all to remember that we really are the same here on the Kenai Peninsula. We're all a little bit different, but we have to remember that we've got to work together. And I think it's very, very important that we all help and support each other. I can tell you that whether you have an interim city manager here or a permanent city manager here, we are blessed here on the Kenai Peninsula to have a great organization of all the city managers, working together, helping, supporting, and going ahead and sharing things. And I think that's really, really important as we move forward. Next slide. One of the concerns that I have, and I always end this, as we're working towards a SEDS, is to remember the bigger picture. I think we all get to this point where we're just worried about yourself, or what's going on on my street, or my road, or my business. And that's great, you got to do that at some point. But as an elected official especially, you need to be able to take a step back and look at that big picture. Because as you can see by my little comic up there, it does make a difference if you move back to take a look and see what's going on. Next slide. We have to remember, you know, 25,000 square miles makes up the Kenai Peninsula. And we all talk about being the size of West Virginia, and you can see it right there. But it's still not that big when you compare it to the whole state. But we are so diverse, we have to remember that. So, do me a big favor, as you're looking at, and you all have copies of this, as you're looking at things and you're looking at the goals, just try and see yourself in it. You're not going to agree with every last thing, but hopefully you will see yourself in it, and you will see your organization in it. And that's the goal, that's the key. Next slide. We've got lots of things that we're in the middle of going on right now. I do want to tell you about, from getting the word out and making sure that people know about the Kenai Peninsula, we received a contract from the federal government to be able to do, we're doing between a six and eight minute video on the Kenai Peninsula, and why it's so cool for people to be looking to move their business down here, raise their families down here, and play down here. The video should be done by sometime in June. There are businesses from all over the Kenai Peninsula that are in the process of being interviewed for this. In fact, there is a very prominent business here in town that will be featured in this video. But our goal is going to be to place it with the Alaska Channel, so you'll see it not only in all the hotels around Alaska, but also we're working with the airports to make sure that when people see and have a couple of extra minutes, they see what's going on here on the Kenai Peninsula, and they decide to come and visit with us. Thank you all very much. There's my contact information again. I'd be more than happy to answer questions, and again, I appreciate being here.
I just have two questions.
Yes, ma'am.
I think it was last month or the month before, I did find a Facebook event and was involved in, you know, some of the word sniffing and the breakout groups. And then today, I know the chamber had a chamber lunch where you presented and got feedback from the community. Both were very well attended. How do we as council keep track of that, or is it just working with Jason in the chamber? Or, because I think everyone would like to, you know, take a look at the draft.
Well, what's going to happen is, once we have the draft done, it's not only going to be on our website, but we'll push it out to the chambers and to the city managers, and we're going to ask them to make sure that it gets in everybody's hands. And again, you know, to take a hard look at it, see what makes sense. And remember, you know, again, we're very, very diverse, and you're not going to agree with every last little piece of it. I'm going to tell you that right now. It's not meant for it to be a warm and fuzzy and you feel great about every last little thing. That's not going to happen.
Yeah, I will say though, so the breakout group that I got sorted into, you know, had people from the other side of the peninsula, and what were some of their concerns, childcare, you know, drug abuse. So, we really do have some shared, you know, positives and negatives. So, that was not comforting to see, but, you know, it felt like there was some shared goals there.
I agree with you. And that's why, you know, with all these ones that we've done, I've spoken to just about every single community and a variety. And the thing is too, like, some people have asked, well, why did you speak to Seward's chamber during the day and then their council at night? And it's because they're different groups. And you have a following, he's got a following, you know? And that's why we've tried to mix things up and being able to listen to folks.
Are there any questions for Tim? Sorry, council member question. On the slideshow that says the fiscal year 2020 to 2021 capital improvement plans, I know it's just a slide, and you've picked out six. Is there a reason why you picked those six?
No, we were just looking to pick out some of them that was provided to us by the administration. So, we just picked the half dozen of them out.
Okay, thank you.
Because again, what we were looking for was, I wanted to make sure that you could see, and there are some pretty different ones in that list of six, but what I wanted to do is make sure that you could see that they could fit under the six goal, under the five goals that we have. That's the important part for us, is making sure you see that part. I'm not trying to rank your things or anything, that's not my goal.
Councilmember Sees, did you have any questions?
No, I don't, and I just want to thank Tim for all the information. He's done a super job for us.
Well, thank you so much, Tim. Thanks for your time. And Seward, as always, we appreciate your support.
Thank you very much. And again, please email me, let me know what you think, okay? Have a great day, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is Northern Edge presentation by Brandon Rail, John Herry. Oh, hi. Welcome.
Thank you. Can I take this off while I'm sitting here?
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Great, thank you. Okay, I'm hoping that...
Well, before you get started, I just want to show the community that you had provided, this is a picture of the USS Comstock. So, they provided this to City Hall, and this was when the Comstock was here in September 16th of 2019. And it said, "Thank you to the people of Seward for our generous hospitality while the Navy ship was here." So, I just want to make sure that the public saw this. And now I'll turn it back over to you.
Okay. Well, first off, thank you for giving us this time tonight. My name is Senior Chief Petty Officer Brandon Rail. I'm with the Alaskan Command Public Affairs Office. Excuse me. Probably seen a lot of you if you went out and visited the ship last year or late 2019 when it was here, along with one of the folks that's joining me on the Zoom call, Mr. John Mosher, who is the U.S. Pacific Fleet's Environmental Program Manager for the Pacific Northwest and Alaska. Also joining me on the Zoom call is Mr. Kenny Skarle, who is from my office. And I'm going to diverge from Northern Edge real quick. The reason he is on the call, and it looks like you can see him up there in the right corner, is I am getting ready to retire. So, my three years that I've been visiting Seward and working with the coastal communities here is coming to an end. Next time you see me, it's going to be in extra tufts and jeans and, you know, regular Alaska attire. So, anything that you might have reached out to me in the past for just general questions about the military in Alaska, Kenny will be your new point of contact. Same phone numbers, so, you know, please feel free to give him a ring. So, back to Northern Edge. I'm going to lead off with a couple of minutes talking about the exercise itself, and then John will take over and talk about some of the environmental questions that we've received as we've been visiting various communities. So, next slide, please. So, I'm going to go through this one pretty quickly. Why is it important that we hold exercises like Northern Edge in Alaska? So, back in the 50s, there was an Air Force general who said, "Alaska is the most strategic location on earth." That was true in the 50s at the beginning of the Cold War. It's even more true now, even though we've been through that Cold War, we've had a period where not much has been going on, but we're entering a new kind of interesting period where things are changing. The large globe that you see on the left side, what's important to note, there is those red lines that you see represent flight times from Alaska to major locations within the northern hemisphere. If you can see the numbers on there, there are not any numbers that are greater than nine hours. So, meaning from Alaska, we can reach pretty much any strategic locations in the northern hemisphere within that timeframe. In the upper right-hand corner, what you'll see is a slide that represents, it's a little bit small there, but if you can see it, there's a couple of yellow lines, one that goes around the top of Canada, which is representing the Northwest Passage. These are trade routes that have opened up, or I should say maritime passageways that have opened up with the changing conditions in the Arctic that we up here are pretty familiar with. The other line that you'll see up there is the Northwest Trade Route, which goes, I'm sorry, that is not the Northwest, the Northeast Trade Route, which goes over the top of Russia. This one is very important because some of our other neighbors to the West, namely China, look at this in a very strategic way. Because instead of shipping their goods south through the Pacific, through the Indian Ocean, through the Suez, and then finally back up to Europe, they can just, in the summertime, go north and over and back down into European ports. Generally, this shaves off about two weeks of their travel time, their transit time. So, saves them, it's a huge economic impact for them. Russia itself is ready to take advantage of this, and they're ready to protect their interest in these newfound sources of income. That lower right-hand map that you see, if you can see it on there, and I'm kind of squinting, but there's a bunch of little dots along the coast of Russia. That represents their military installations along that trade route. So, they are poised and ready to protect their interest in the Arctic. So, next slide, please. So, in order to protect our interest in the Arctic, it is important that we exercise our abilities up here. Northern Edge is one of the many exercises that we use to do that. It's a biennial exercise held every odd year, dating back to 1975. It is primarily an aviation exercise, which occurs over the Joint Pacific-Alaska Range Complex, what we refer to as the J-Park. The J-Park is our country's biggest aerial training range. It, we'll see it on the next slide, but it encompasses a very large area, kind of east of Delta Junction, stretching out towards the Canadian border. There are also smaller little sections scattered across the state that, when they're all put together, they make up the greater J-Park. So, this year, Northern Edge is going to occur from May 3rd to May 14th, and we expect it to be very similar in size and scale to what we've seen in 2017 and 2019. That means approximately 200 aircraft will be participating. Three-quarters of those will be coming from land-based installations, namely Jay Bear and Ielson, along with a few other smaller expeditionary-type airfields. The remaining 50 or so, we anticipate, will be coming from a carrier strike group that will be operating in the Gulf of Alaska, which is what I'm sure everyone here will be interested to hear about. John will talk a little bit more about the TMAA, or the Temporary Maritime Activities Area. It's basically a box that our Navy assets will operate in, in the Gulf of Alaska. And on that note, I'll turn it over to John.
Okay, thank you, Brandon. Good evening, everybody. It's great to join you tonight. Glad to say I wish I could be there in person. The last time I was there was during USS Comstock's visit. So, it's been a little while, and I do look forward to things opening up in the not too distant future. Next slide, please. So, this is the area that Angie Brown was talking about, the J-Parks. You can see all the purple areas of air space and land-based training over inland Alaska. And then towards the bottom of the slide, you can also see what we refer to as the Gulf of Alaska Temporary Maritime Activities Area, the TMAA. That's the area within the Gulf that Navy training activities are during the exercise. So, like Brandon said, this is a very large area, and the volume of space is instrumental. It is irreplaceable for the US military. This allows for just a huge realm of realistic training to occur, both overland, in the air, and at sea, all combined, looking together with different military services, all in cooperation. Next slide, please. Just a bit of a blow up now of the TMAA, with indications of where it sits relative to the various coastal communities. So, it is fairly far offshore. It is completely outside of 12 nautical miles from the coast, so out in international waters. And then just indicators there of approximate distances from each of those coastal communities. And then we indicate the center of the TMAA, and I'll speak to this a little bit, but the majority of the activities themselves occur pretty much out towards the center of the area, just to avoid other users of marine environment, shipping activity, fishing activity, things of that nature. Next slide, please. So, in the TMAA, this is the location within the J-Park where the SC activities occur. It's only established during the Navy's participation in the exercise, so it's not something you'll see, indicated on all the charts. It is simply an area that we define to help us through our analysis of potential effects, as well as define just where the activities occur. It is a large area, it's approximately 42,000 square nautical miles. It's allowed flexibility of training, it allows us to operate in areas and avoid other users of the marine environment. So, it's just a great asset again. We do avoid and place no restrictions on other navigation, so civilian shipping, fishing activities, commercial aircraft, no restrictions on any of the other users. As I mentioned, a lot of the activities themselves typically occur further out in the middle of the TMAA, further offshore, again, just to simply avoid overlap with other activities that may be going on a little closer to coast. And then with each of the activity activities, we do have a number of protective measures. Let's unlead. Next slide, please. So, protective measures. A number of excessive mitigations we've been developing over the years, working in cooperation with the National Marine Fisheries Service. We do implement protective mitigation zones that are established when we operate with access sonar systems or with various weapon systems. We also implement a minimization of live explosive during training activities. And over the last two exercises, going in 2017 and 2019, they avoided the use of explosive munitions entirely, only using practice weapon systems of practice munitions. An important mitigation area that was developed in 2016, Fort Lautz Bank area. This has been important fishing ground. It's in the northwest portion of the TMAA, fairly close to the shore in that corner. And there is a commitment to not use any explosives in that particular activity to be protected of the fishing grounds themselves. During activities, we do post-train qualified marine species lookout, helps establish those mitigation zones that I mentioned, and avoids contact either with vessels or with the training activities with those marine species. We have a requirement to report monitoring results and the results of the activities that are conducted during each exercise. So, these are provided to the regulators and are publicly available on our website. So, you can look back at each of the exercises over time and see what we did for each exercise for those training activities. We do coordinate with regulatory agencies as well, and this allows us to do adaptive management. But as things change, as we learn more, as better science becomes available, it allows us to manage or modify those mitigation measures that we've been implementing over time. And then another part of the project, a part of our consultations and regulatory requirements, is to conduct a number of marine species monitoring projects. And these include survey work, as well as monitoring of marine species in the offshore area. Next slide, please. Through our analyses over time, we have determined that there is minimal impact of marine species from these activities, very specifically with fish. The TMAA was positioned very specific to avoid fisheries management areas, specifically with some of the important commercial fish species, salmon and groundfish. No overlap with those fishing areas at all. There's no mortality of fish from sonar, which is a... which is an area of our activities that gets a fair amount of scrutiny. But there is no impact to fish from sonar activities. With the minimization of explosives, this also helps minimize those effects on marine species. Marine mammals, another group that gets a lot of scrutiny in our analyses and in ours, that allow us to both contribute to the science for marine species research, but allow us to conduct the training that we do as well. Since 2009, the Navy contributed approximately $6 million, specifically to marine species research in the Gulf of Alaska. Over the years, this has been primarily focused on marine mammals. So I'll say in this project that's indicated on the next bullet, over the last two years and continues into the future, it's a very exciting project that we're involved in now with the University of Alaska, with salmon tags. And this allows a better understanding of the habitat use by them species, migratory groups that they use, and then overlap with human activities in the Gulf of Alaska. And then some good information can be found on our project website, and one indicated there, for both those projects that we've done in the Gulf of Alaska, as well as others around the country. Next slide. And so with the activities, of course, we have to do environmental analyses. In 2017, we completed our last supplemental EIS, and this allowed us to obtain marine mammal permits through the National Marine Fisheries Service. And those covered our activities from 2017 to 2022. So with that said, coming up on 2022, in the not-too-far future, we have to renew our authorization, have to renew those permits to continue to train. So to that end, we have initiated another supplemental EIS project that is underway now. And we hope to obtain, through that process, renewal of our permit that would cover training that occurred beyond 2022. The supplemental EIS was released, the draft, I'm sorry, the draft supplemental EIS was released in December of 2020. And that was followed by a 67-day comment period, with two virtual public meetings that occurred. Virtual meetings, unfortunately, due to COVID precautions, as opposed to the normal face-to-face meetings that we've conducted in the past. We just completed those. We would expect to have the final EIS drafted and ready for release in winter of 2022, so just under a year from now, we expect to have the final supplemental EIS available. And associated with that, in addition to the public meetings that we conducted, there is an ongoing commitment to outreach and public engagement in venues like this, or in other public events that occur around the state. And then all the public, or, I'm sorry, all the documents for the EIS project, as well as other informational materials are available on our project website, the ones indicated there on the screen, so eis.com. Next slide, please. And I believe that's it for this slide. And I look forward to answering any questions that you all may have.
I'll start with Councilmember Sees on the phone. Do you have any questions?
No, I don't, but it is pretty interesting.
Thank you. Councilwoman Casa Grande, I know that you have questions.
This has been happening since 2017, is that correct? The first time this operation took place?
1975. Every two years.
In the Gulf?
Yes. Some years, it has not happened in the Gulf. It has been exclusively air assets from Jay Bear and Ileson. But as frequently as possible, I've been dealing with this exercise since the early 2000s. And most of those years, we've had the Gulf carrier assets.
Okay. And do you know the fishing area? Like, for groundfish, they have 4A, 4B, 3B, all of that. Is this taking place in Area 3B, do you know?
That would be, John, do you have an answer for that?
I'm not thrilled with that number. I have seen graphics of the fisheries management areas, and we largely avoid those. So if it is salmon, we avoid those entirely. If it's shellfish, we avoid those entirely. There is minimal overlap with some of the groundfish management areas. So there is the potential for some overlap. Now with that said, the only activity that we could have that would have any potential to affect fish is the use of explosives in training. Again, we minimize that, and those activities occur actually very far from shore. So very little potential to overlap with those management areas, even if the larger TMAA does have some overlap.
Thank you. Does the Navy, you talked about a lot of scientifical and environmental studies that the Navy completes. Is the Navy doing those studies themselves, or are those hired by a third party?
Great question. So almost entirely, it is another organization, whether it's academic institutions like the University of Alaska or other scientific research organizations, conduct the research. We fund it. We contribute in some ways to help the project be to develop what the goals of the project are. But the research is done by independent researchers without the Navy's involvement. And those are all publicly released documents, publicly released research, which not only benefits us and how we minimize effects, but also all the other users of the marine environment. So it's really a great experience.
Awesome. And that just concludes my last question. We have the Alaska Sea Life Center here in Seward that is always looking for grant funding and opportunities for funding. So I really hope that since you guys are operating right out of Seward and right in front of our Gulf, that I saw the number $6 million in scientific studies, that maybe some of that money could somehow be utilized in our own gateway of the Alaska Sea Life Center. So thank you.
And I will say I did attend one of those virtual meetings and listened. And, you know, folks want more information, track down this packet and your website is included in your presentation. A lot of those studies and more information on those areas is on that, so thank you for that.
We're 3A, for however, to your question.
We're 3A? I was just wondering what area that particular...
Yeah, that whole area, kind of Kodiak, over Pennsylvania and South is 3A.
Okay, thank you.
Great, well, thank you for joining us tonight. And yeah, thanks again. We have a framed picture of the Comstock the last time you guys came, so thank you again.
Mayor, and then the last slide that was on that presentation has contact info for John Mosher, for any of those environmental-type questions. And then you'll notice Major Michael Herzog on there. He was not able to be with us tonight, but he is from Jay Bear. He will be leading up the Joint Information Bureau during the exercise. So if there's any other exercise-specific questions, he'll be able to field those while it's happening. And then the other note I had for you, it was John kind of brought it up, the community outreach type events. I wanted to let you all know that unfortunately, due to the COVID mitigation things, I don't know, I don't think we're going to have a ship pulling in for this exercise or any of those type events like we've done in recent years. But we're keeping our eyes open for opportunities to get back here.
Well, I will say the Navy band was very well-received by the community. So we appreciated the Navy band being here the last time.
Well, that's great, ma'am, because they are actually preparing a virtual product for you guys, specifically for you. So they can't be here in person, but they wanted to do something, so.
I think the community really enjoys that. Yeah, that'd be great.
They're all in.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy retirement.
Great, and next on the agenda is public hearings. The first one is, we do have an ordinance for public hearing. It's Ordinance 2021-004, Matt Clark.
Ordinance 2021-004 is establishing a code of ethics for municipal officers, defining a procedure for a city manager conflict of interest, and quantifying the terms substantial financial interest. This ordinance was introduced on March 8th and is coming tonight for a public hearing and enactment.
And so what we're doing is looking for a motion and a second.
I move to approve Ordinance 2021-004.
I'll second you.
And normally, at this point, we would turn it over to administration for just a brief overview, but since Councilmember Osanga and I worked on it, I'll start off and turn it over to Councilmember Osanga right before we open the public hearing. There was a couple of things that I specifically wanted to do with this ordinance, and that included having a mechanism for the city manager to complete a conflict of interest form, qualifying the terms substantial financial interest. And just to, you know, I guess my point with this is we have such a great council right now. I feel like it's the time to get an ethics code in place, because I don't think we're targeting anyone. Everyone is working together well. Everyone is on this council for the right reasons, community-minded. And just set a reasonable standards of conduct for all the city municipal officers, including the city manager, so that the public may be assured in its trust, you know, and our behavior is well-placed. And I just feel like now's the time to get something like this in place. So, Councilmember Osanga, did you have any other comments? We did have a work session on this.
You pretty much covered everything I was going to say. It's, thank you for all the work.
So with that, before we go to questions, we just do an intro. I'm going to open up the public hearing and see if there's any public members wishing to speak.
Ma'am, Mayor, I do not have anyone.
And no one submitted comments?
Correct.
No one answered the answers?
No public hearing from citizens.
With that, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Administration, did you have a comment?
I just had one thing, it might be just clerical, but it says 2020-004 to 2021?
Yeah, that's just a clear...
Okay, I was just...
Thank you.
So we'll do 2021-004. It's correct, I'm not correct.
It's on the ordinance.
I repeated that mistake out loud. I actually am going to kick it off with just one thing before we start to get into the meat of it. The city attorney had one further amendment that I'm going to propose now. So under the conflict of interest, so 2.01020, and I'll refer you to page, best case to look at it, would be page 58. And this is where we're talking about asking the city manager to fill out the conflict of interest paperwork. And the sentence ends at the top. And annually thereafter, so long as they hold the position, here's the amendment to add. "A city manager shall file the disclosure statement within 30 days after the first day of employment." And I'll look for a second.
I'll second.
Thank you. And so while we were setting that the city manager would complete a financial disclosure statement form, and we said that they would do it annually, we didn't really give a time, we didn't give a time limit for them to do it when they first become city manager. So that just circumvents any questions, or maybe just do it within the first 30 days of being employed. So if we could just get that taken care of, is there any questions with that specifically?
Could you say where that is inserted, or did you replace?
Yeah, so it's just inserted, so after that sentence, and annually thereafter, so long as they hold the position. And then we'll say, this is the amendment in its entirety. "A city manager shall file the disclosure statement within 30 days after the first day of employment." So that kicks it off, and then annually, they'll submit that same form. At the very top of the page, sorry. Is there another question with that? It's hard.
Okay. I see where it is, it just doesn't read right to me. I don't know. If you're just inserting that as a sentence? So after the annually thereafter, so long as they hold the position, you're going to say within 30 days of employment?
"A city manager shall file the disclosure statement." Which we could, that was how the city attorney...
It just seems like logically, it should go from applying and then within 30 days of employment, and then annually after that, doesn't it?
I think he just didn't know how to insert it in that already indicated sentence. Well, what we could do is when initially applying for a vacant elected or appointed position, or within 30 days of employment, and annually thereafter. Would that be better? Okay, so I'll with...
Yeah, I think he was just trying to separate the city manager being a hired...
Position.
Yeah.
So then it says, this just, this 30 days specifically just applies to the city manager?
Yes.
Does it say that?
Yeah, it says "A city manager shall file the disclosure statement in 30 days." As I read this, so it says, "These municipal officers includes the city manager council and planning and zoning commissioners," and then they go through the rest, vacant, elected, or appointed, and annually thereafter. And then I think it just pulls out the city manager.
Okay, okay, I just didn't, I have to feel bad.
I mean, if you don't like it...
No, it's okay.
Well, let's call for a vote, and if not, then we need to re-craft it.
Voting on that amendment, Osanga?
Yes.
Sees?
Yes.
Baklan?
Yes.
Casa Grande?
Yes.
DeMoss?
Yes.
Leclerc?
Yes.
And Mary Cherry?
Yes.
That amendment is approved.
So the city attorney will be happy, Vice Mayor Baklan?
I'm just going to start, I would like to move to strike number 12 from page 59. "City municipal offices are strongly encouraged to dress in business casual attire at town to meetings."
I'll second.
And then subsequent to that, okay. I'll let you speak to your amendment.
I know that in my personal life, I have very little time to even get home to change or shower, so I apologize. Sometimes I might smell like food, which probably all the time. I know that before we spoke about this, and we talked about, you know, barriers. And I think even saying that things are strongly encouraged could be a barrier to some people, because they may feel that maybe they don't afford, they can't afford to do, you know, to have nice clothes or have things that are business casual, and/or just expectations of them. I think that it would just be open it up to more, do wear nice clothes when I have the time, but most of the time, I'm rushing here from work. It is for our planning and zoning also, which it would apply to as a volunteer position. And if any of them are running from work, or coming home from watching kids, or whatever they're doing, I just think it would be a little more amenable. I do understand the importance of dressing nice and looking nice, that that is showing intent and respect for the positions that we are entrusted from the citizens. But I think that's where we also donate and give our time and our commitment as well, so.
I'd just like to echo everything that Vice Mayor Baklan said. I think that we want to encourage all people to be able to run for these seats. And I think that the people that are voted in are voted in by the public, and the public are fully aware of how those people compose themselves. And so I totally agree. I don't see any problem with striking that.
I also would agree with striking that. I think that, can we, is there any way to maybe change it to city-employed municipal? Like, just for the employee people? I mean, I just feel like...
Let's do this first, and then maybe if there's another amendment?
Okay.
Do you want to do that?
Yeah.
Okay. Instead of amendment?
I just, I guess, is there a policy for employees' dress code that's different than this, if this was not to?
The only thing different would be safety items that would be required, that we have to wear.
Yeah, if you're, yeah, okay.
Go ahead, sorry.
I mean, no, that's okay, but just to finish my thought, I want, to me, it's important that, like, city managers and people in those positions are dressed nice. But I feel like what Councilmember Casa Grande said was, people know who they've elected. And I also think that, I've actually talked to a couple of people... And I also think that, I've actually talked to a couple of people about this, and they say they like it when people show up in their car hearts and things like that because it shows that you're just regular people as a council member. So, I don't know, just something to think about.
Councilmember Cease on the phone, before I forget you, do you have any comments?
No, I just, I agree with Tony that we shouldn't have to dress up as whatever. I don't have those kind of clothes.
Well, I'll just say, you know, definitely there was no intent to put a barrier up or try to make people feel less than. I think it was more, you know, more showing that respect for the position and just showing up clean. But I think people are doing that already. I, I don't, I'm not gonna vote in favor of not striking this. I'll vote in favor of striking this because it really wasn't meant to target anyone, so. Councilmember Osenga, did you have any comments?
Nope, I'm good.
Madam Clerk, would you call for a vote, please?
Voting on the amendment to strike dress code, Osenga?
Yes.
Cease?
Yes.
McClure?
Yes.
Casagrande?
Yes.
Demas?
Yes.
Baklan?
Yes.
And Mary Terry?
Yes.
That amendment is approved.
Thank you. Are there any other, council member Casagrande?
If I can ask the makers of the ordinance, either Mayor Terry or Councilmember Osenga, on number eight. Are we on the right section?
Number eight?
Yeah, 2.01.020, number eight. Does this read that you just can't leave as a council member and get a job for a position that you created or made a raise for? So as long as in the last year that you were on council, you didn't create a position or install a raise, then you could leave your council position and after six months maybe get hired as an employee of the city?
Oh, I missed that last part, like within six months?
Yeah, because this says, for one year after leaving office, the city municipal officer shall not hold any compensated city office or employment that was created, or the salary or benefits of which were specifically increased in a vote by council during the last year the member was in office, so.
Yes, so I didn't understand the.
So, let's just say, I wanted to apply for city manager. And let's just say, we never created the position of city manager this year, and we never gave city manager an increase. Could I leave my council seat and apply to be city manager, given those two things?
I think there's another section in code that says you can't become a city employee within a year without a vote of the council. But I think you're correct with this is specifically saying, like you can't create your golden parachute.
Perfect.
And, yeah.
Thank you. Okay, I just wanted that clarification, thank you.
And I think that's also has to do with, you know, the city municipal officers includes port and commerce advisor, excuse me, planning and zoning commission and the city manager. So those folks would also be open.
But they wouldn't create any positions or, okay. But I see what you're saying, thank you. And I know you guys talked about this a lot in the work session, but my Zoom was really patchy.
Of course.
So I'd like to make an amendment on section E. And again, I apologize, I know you guys had a big conversation, but I dropped off in the middle of it, so I don't know where it went. But I would like to strike $5,000 as an aggregate and make that $2,000.
I'll second.
Go ahead, did you wanna speak to your motion?
I just, for me, if, you know, when I'm thinking of financial gain, to me honestly, like $500, $1,000 is a huge financial gain. I think it's really relative, and I think that was the reason that we were defining that. It doesn't necessarily mean that if you're going to somehow benefit financially for $2,000 or more, that you're going to have a conflict of interest. But at least it gives you a guidance to declare that, and then it's up to council to decide whether they feel that that's a substantial, correct? So I just think.
Well, I think that, I think then council would look to this for guidance. Like as mayor, if I knew that this was being met, then I would say there was a substantial financial. Go ahead.
So if I can just rebuttal off of that, so say you're going to do a rate increase, and somebody that has a business is going to have to pay an additional $2,000 a year, then I would declare a conflict of interest because my bills are gonna go up over $2,000 and tell me if I'm misunderstanding conflict of interest. So then with that said, I wouldn't be able to vote because of the way this is wrote? Or would that be something that council would be like, oh, okay, let's look around the room, like 5,000? But that's where I'm at.
Vice Mayor Baklan, could you stand up a minute?
Could you explain it again, one more time, why you would wanna bring it down to 1,000?
Down to 2,000?
Or 2,000, yes.
Um, just because in my mind, 2,000.
That's what we're looking for, is better guidance. Councilmember McClure?
I think part of the discussion too was with the $5,000. That coincides with our APOP form, our conflict forms, that it's 5,000, or if it's less than 5,000, we don't even have to say.
Gotcha.
And I think that was where that, I wasn't on.
That's where the number came.
Yeah, so for that reason, I'd like to stick with the 5,000 because it keeps it consistent.
In that manner then.
I have something to say.
Go ahead, councilmember Cease.
Well, I have to say that with the new tariffs coming in and all that stuff, with the price of those things, there might be a lot of conflict of interest with people who are in businesses. On the diocese here. So I hope we spoke with the 5,000.
So with.
Thank you. Go ahead.
If I may, with that said, I'd like to withdraw my amendment if my second will agree.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Good discussion, I mean, these are the discussions, we should get out of the, go ahead.
And with that said, and I hate to do this Johnny on the spot, but is there any language that we can put in this financial, substantial financial interest that also includes the language that you said is elsewhere in code, that we would have to find an attorney's opinion that protects somebody from voting on something that's for a large user group? I think the intention of this is that, that I as a council member am not supposed to be making money for myself. But that doesn't mean that I'm supposed to have my hands tied behind my back and not be able to vote on things that still pertain to me as a citizen and a business owner as part of a larger group.
So I guess we'll say that this is a good step in the right direction. Is it perfect? No. But we're also going through that codification update with the attorney. And I think that could be something that could be included with that. I'd hate to derail this, which I, you know, this could be voted down tonight. But I would hate to derail something that gets us closer, if it's, even if it's not gonna get us all the way. And maybe, I know that that attorney opinion was just distributed in the last month or so about the larger pool? If we can maybe get that out again to council.
Related to the CARES Act, business funding.
Yeah, yeah, so if we could get that out. So I mean, you can, if you wanna make a motion, we can debate a motion, but that would just be my thoughts on it.
I'd like to not derail this myself, and my apologies. I just couldn't come up with the language in a good, so I can always bring it back again to add something that is well thought out and that I can have a discussion with the attorney.
Yeah.
And the clerk.
And I didn't mean to be offensive when I said.
No, that's fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
Because I think that we should have lots of discussion about this because I want us to be very intentional. So I think it's good tonight to, whether we've had a work session or not, we should still talk about things.
Okay.
So is there any other questions or comments? Did I just kill everything? I do wanna talk more.
No, it's good. I guess my comment would be thank you to both of you. I know how much work this has taken, and it looks like you guys really did your homework and looked to a lot of communities and didn't reinvent the wheel. I can tell that a lot of things were pulled from a lot of different communities. And I know I got sassy with Mayor Terry. At one point, it was like, what, does Seward have to be the most ethical group in all of the state? But then her reply was, yes, I'm looking forward to having Seward be one of the most ethical city officials in the state. So it really kinda set me straight, so thank you, and it's good.
Well, and with everything else, if we put something in here that ends up being onerous, we definitely need to be open to changing it.
Right.
So again, as we go through that codification, and this is included, you know, if there's something that needs to be changed as we change other parts of the code, we should absolutely do that. And if, Madam Clerk, if you could write a note about that larger class and have the attorney get that as part of the code change and make sure it's included.
Thank you.
And I think we're ready for a vote when you're ready.
Voting on the enactment of ordinance 21-004 as amended, Cease?
Yes.
Casagrande?
Yes.
Baklan?
Yes.
Demas?
Yes.
McClure?
Yes.
Osenga?
Yes.
Mayor Terry?
Yes.
That ordinance is enacted.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is Resolution 2021-031. Madam Clerk, if you could read that title into the minutes, please.
Resolution 2021-031 is recommending key ninth peninsula borough approval of the city-owned Fourth of July Creek subdivision, Seward Marine Industrial Center, Fire Department replat, a replat of Block 2 and Block 5, Fourth of July Creek subdivision, Seward Marine Industrial Center.
And I'm looking for a motion in a second.
I move for the approval of Resolution 2021-031.
I second it.
And this is a public hearing, but I'll turn it over to administration just to do an overview of the resolution, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So with the land being, the lands over SMIC being slowly leased out, and we wanted to define the area between the fire, where they have the training center now, and define it from a possible lease area. We needed to get some boundaries up and then extend that road across. So that's where this came in, and talking with the fire chief, and then, so part of this training center is also for Seward volunteers, it's also for other state firemen to come down to also do the AVTEC, and they also do the training in that facility. So we're just trying to define that location so they can, you know, make fence stop, maybe bring in more stuff, but it's definitely separating the lease sites.
Thank you. And with that, I'll open the public hearing. Madam Clerk, oh, sorry, I was.
It's okay.
Attorney, why would you have a hand up? Did anyone provide written comments?
I did not receive any, and no one has a hand up.
Thank you, and I'll open the hearing, sorry. And then I'll turn it over to council, or madam, I'm sorry, councilmember Cease, do you have any questions for administration regarding this resolution?
No, I don't.
Thank you. Any questions in the room? Councilmember Casagrande?
I don't know that this is the appropriate place to ask this, so I can, I can ask it later. Mayor Terry, you can keep me on track. But, and, correct?
It is city-owned land already. I understand what you're saying, but, so the fire department has a training center there already. They have that big red building, they set it on fire, and they train putting it out, putting out the fire. It's separate from the AVTEC one.
Okay.
Which is not, so that's not included on the scope review?
It's not showing it in there, but we already have a big, like a couple of containers there that's, it's like shaped like a house fire, and they go in for training. It's already there.
Okay. Thank you.
Just going off that question, so this, this looks like it actually extends Mustang or allows for Mustang extension, so it's not, this replat isn't restricting any further development to the back?
Correct. Madam Mayor, so we're just trying to define the roads. I know that Ms. Wolf, planning and zoning, is trying to get all those roads also platted in the future. So this is just one of them as we go through the process.
Did you have a follow up?
I was just gonna say, same with Olga and Morris as well. It looks like those are in there as well. Thank you.
Any more questions? Anyone else on the guys? Madam Clerk, can you call for a vote, please?
Voting on the approval of Resolution 2021-031, Baklan?
Yes.
Demas?
Yes.
Osenga?
Yes.
McClure?
Yes.
Casagrande?
Yes.
Cease?
Yes.
Mayor Terry?
Yes.
That resolution is approved.
Thank you. Now we're down to Resolution 2021-035. So I'll have the clerk read that into the amendments.
Resolution 2021-035 is authorizing the city manager to purchase an Arrowclave decontamination system from Arrowclave LLC in the amount of $84,534.20 in appropriating funds.
And so before we get a motion in a second, I'm gonna go ahead and declare a conflict of interest. And here's why. You know, I definitely manage the cruise ship terminal. This equipment's being bought specifically with that CPV money from the state of Alaska for supporting cruise ships docking in Seward. And while, you know, it doesn't necessarily go directly to me, I just feel like there's too close of a contact just based on my managing the budget for that facility and, you know, the cruise ships coming in there. So I feel like I would have a conflict of interest, so I wanted to declare that and turn the gavel over to the vice mayor. So I'm looking for you to give a ruling.
I will declare that you do not have a conflict of interest.
Okay. That's fine. Is there, and then it opens up to council if they would like to.
And you object?
Agree or disagree.
I, I agree, no, I agree.
Okay. All right, then I will take the gavel back. And I'll look for a second, a motion in a second on that.
I move for the approval of Resolution 2021-035.
I second it.
And I'll turn it over to administration.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So when, you know, COVID started and they were giving out money for like CARES Act stuff, so they had some state CPV money, it was separate, and they sent it to the city. The city, they asked the city if we could do something, and we met with the railroad to discuss what could be, it's for mitigation purposes, only be used at the railroad facility, at the cruise ship dock, I should say, cruise ship dock. So we came up with some things that we needed to do, and we're gonna do an MOA, but because of the possibility of everything being, being, and I wouldn't say torn down, but being replaced over there, we didn't wanna dump a bunch of money into new bathrooms and things like that. But we came across with that, you know, they started fogging buildings. Again, with the fire department, we decided that this might be a good way, as cruise ship would come in, when they leave, they could go in with these foggers, fog the entire building, and the smaller units can fog the offices, and then the whole place would be ready for the next cruise ship the next day. So we have to use this funding by June, and right now, I don't think it's gonna be extended. And it's just money that has to be used at the cruise ship terminal, and it's just, it's about $440,000. We're looking at some more things to put there to mitigate COVID in the future.
And I'll just speak in support of these units. One thing that I like about the city purchasing this is I think they can be used other places. So at the high school auditorium, or at a larger venue, in the, you know, in this council chambers. So, you know, I think, you know, there might be future pandemics, and this equipment could work for those future things.
And I just want one more thing, so this belongs to the city of Seward. The items be kept at the cruise ship dock, but we could go grab the handheld unit if we had an outbreak in the city hall, we could go grab the unit, spray down city hall. So that's something that does belong to the city of Seward, you know, it's still ours. We're responsible for it, but it would be like stored at the cruise ship terminal.
Vice Mayor?
I'd also like to speak in support because I saw on there this also can mitigate norovirus, which also is a lasting thing that, you know, luckily, Baklan would, I've never gotten it. I have had friends that have had it, and it's not good. So I think that even though COVID and people are getting vaccines, we should still try to mitigate it as much as possible.
Councilmember Cease, do you have any questions or comments?
No, I just think it's a good idea.
Councilmember Demas?
How long does it take to follow, like the cruise ship terminal?
Through the mayor, so I'm not sure, but part of this funding is also for them to come up and give a class to the fire department, also to the personnel at the terminal and the janitors at the terminal. They will give a class, and I don't know how long it takes.
Nice, thank you.
Councilmember Casagrande?
I don't wanna make anything more difficult than it already is, but is there any possible way to do a small business outreach, maybe through the chamber, that if other local businesses. way to do a small business outreach, maybe through the chamber, that if other local businesses wanted to tag on to this company, if they're already coming, and if they wanted smaller foggers for their places? Or did they just call the company in the, in the pamphlet?
Um, through the mayor, so there is a company in town that's already doing it, so the city doesn't wanna compete with a private business?
Oh, okay.
Just, I'm throwing that out there. Um, there is a company that was doing it because the city actually hired them to do, we did the Harvey Maslow's office, and I think they did some other areas, they did council chambers. So the city does definitely wanna not compete with private business.
Thank you.
Councilmember Demas?
So is that the same chemicals or whatever?
Correct, the same place where you had your thing. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Madam Clerk, if you could call for a vote, please?
Voting on the approval of Resolution 2021-035. Cease?
Yes.
Demas?
Yes.
Baklan?
Yes.
Casagrande?
Yes.
Osenga?
Yes.
McClure?
Yes.
Mayor Terry?
Yes.
That resolution is approved.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is Resolution 2021-036. Madam Clerk, if you could read the title in the, to the minutes.
Resolution 2021-036 is authorizing the city manager to waive ball field and pavilion rental fee, fees for nonprofit organizations.
I'm looking for a motion in a second.
I move to approve Resolution 2021-036.
I'll second it.
Uh, we'll have administration.
Okay, Madam Mayor, I would, I'm declaring a conflict of interest. Cause I am an umpire, I've been umpiring for, I don't know, fifteen, twenty years, and I make money from this, so I, if you don't mind, I will step back.
Uh, I, I don't think you have a conflict about, we'll just turn it over to Stephen.
We just went to the conflict of interest, I just wanna make sure, cause.
Are you, can you give me a ruling? For real? For real?
How much do you make a year doing that?
For that, depending on the most, uh, thing, probably five to seven hundred dollars.
Oh, really? Don't have a.
Okay, I'm just, I put it out.
Are, are there any objections?
No.
Okay, go ahead.
All right.
Um, just an outline, please.
So Madam Mayor, they, uh, they, the, uh, sports association reached out to us because, like other municipalities, do, um, you know, have, um, don't charge for this because they actually bring a lot of people out there and play softball. I know they definitely missed last year. Um, I, I think this would be a good thing, um, for the community, and, uh, because they do get a lot of people out, and they get a lot of volunteers, they did a lot of work, you know, they line the fields and do a lot of things. So, um, they do take a, um, save a lot of money from the city for not, um, having to go, you know, park the rec to empty the garbages and doing all that stuff. And they clean up after every, I've seen it personally, they clean up after every ga, uh, every tournament, after every game, so.
Thank you. Well, I pulled it off the consent agenda. I am a huge supporter of SSA, that's not why I pulled it off the consent. I just, um, have a couple questions. Um, my first question is, is it says just nonprofits. So, I mean, I just want council to be aware, like, the Red Cross is a nonprofit. So if the Red Cross, you know, there's large nonprofits, there's churches. So if we're saying waive ball field and pavilion rentals, so that's, right now, the way it's written is all our pavilions to all nonprofits. So, I mean, it could be a nonprofit from Anchorage that comes down here and then is able to use our pavilion. So while I don't necessarily have a problem with that, you know, we, uh, again to be intentional, you know, that's what, there's a lot, nonprofit is a broad umbrella. The Sea Life Center is a nonprofit. Um, so, you know, that's not necessarily a bad thing, but I just wanna check and make sure that we're all on track with that. Churches are nonprofits.
Well, was, is it referring just to that little pavilion by Louis Field?
By the ball field, yes, ma'am.
So it should state that somehow. We, not all pavilions, and not grounds.
So that was my question. So if that's what it's referring to, then I have a motion to post, to po, pose, um, in the, so two places, um, in the title, the city manager to waive ball field and ball field pavilion rental. So add ball field in front of pavilion in the title, and then add ball field in front of pavilion in section one.
I'll second.
So again, I'm just checking, is that what you meant, or did they really mean all the pavilions in Seward?
So I know, cause it's the sports association, you heard some of the folks tonight, that, uh, it's, I'm pretty sure it's just for that pavilion, cause they started renting the pavilion as soon as they started taking over.
Okay. So, so I'll stick with my motion.
Could I also just ask, in section two then, um, in the budget reduction, that eight hundred dollars was referring to the Ball Field Pavilion?
I believe so.
Specifically, not all the pavilion rentals in town?
So.
Okay.
Through the mayor, so I leave the, the pavilion rental there, cause I know I rented it a couple of times, it was a donation to them. It was twenty-five dollars per two-hour block, and they usually have it for four hours, I think it's two-hour block, so it was fifty bucks a night, so, about the rate.
Okay.
Councilmember Demas?
Do we wanna look at adding just for local nonprofits, sewer nonprofits, or not?
Well, this is just.
This is just for SSA, please.
Let, let's do this and then talk about, cause I would like to discuss that also. So if there's no further discussion, let's do that, uh, let's do that amendment, please.
Voting on the amendment to add ball field for pavilion. Casagrande?
Yes.
McClure?
Yes.
Demas?
Yes.
Osenga?
Yes.
Baklan?
Yes.
Cease?
Yes.
Mayor Terry?
Yes.
That amendment is approved.
So I had the same thought, Councilmember Demas, but I don't know if we're able to do like a local preference in our rental policies. Um, or maybe if a, if a group's bringing down a large, um, may, bringing down a large tournament, maybe there's other economic benefits to like doing that. I don't know.
Yeah.
But I agree with you, I had that same question. The other question that I have is, um, it, so is, is this in perpetuity, or just for, i- in section two, it says the 2021 budget reduction, so, um, you know, I really do support SSA, I just want us to be very intentional. If we're talking about 2021, and then we'll look at this again with the two-year budget cycle, or are we talking about in perpetuity, this is the new council policy? Councilmember Casagrande?
Um, I'd just say, unless you have a, um, an amendment to make it in perpetuity, I mean, otherwise, we can do it now and look at it again at the budget, but I would support either way. Um, I think that as long as they're, um, having a successful ball games and, and club, and everything's going smooth, and I, I, but the numbers might change, right? The rental fees, so.
Councilmember Osenga?
Um, I just wanna point out something on the, uh, agenda statement. Um, city pavilions are also rented out by nonprofit groups, as a sewer prevention coalition, Katochik native tribe, and, uh, so I do believe it's, I think it's not just that pavilion on this. If, in the agenda state, I mean, I understand that it's written a certain way on the resolution itself, but the agenda statement actually says city pavilions.
Right.
Well, I think we pulled it back to the, that ball field pavilion.
Yeah, I think we just.
Okay, I'm just, that's fine. That's, yeah, I'm, and that's fine, yeah, we did that, but.
Yeah. Um, so, I, I'm gonna make a motion to clarify this resolution. So section C, this resolution shall take effect immediately upon adoption, um, and, uh, stay and continue until rescinded?
Certainly.
Go ahead, Councilmember.
I'm just, I, I just wanna ask, I mean, you, we don't ever specify a time on, on other resolutions, do we, as far as ending and, and beginning? I think that the 2021 budget is only mentioned because it has to be amended. Every budget after, thereafter will be amended anyway, or not amended, but it'll be made, so I don't.
When they reached out to him, I believe they were just looking for this year, but I think it, because they mentioned about the other municipalities, don't charge it off for all the, that's where they were going at, I believe.
Would you consider just, um, adding a new section just with that sentence that says this will be the policy, you know, going forward, so that it's separate from the effective? Is that?
I'll look in a second.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll rescind my motion, and have a new section three that says this will be, uh, the ball field and ball field pavilion policy onward.
Okay.
And then a new section four that says this resolution shall, shall take effect upon adoption.
No, I can say it.
No, no, no.
It's fine.
And within the budget process, if we wanna look at a different policy for all the other pavilions, uh, we can talk about it during the two-year budget cycle. It would just be interesting to see what the breakdown is between birthday parties and nonprofits using those pavilions and weddings. I think we're ready for, oh, Councilmember Cease, I'm sorry, I forgot you. Did you have any comments?
No, I don't, thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, could you call for the vote, please?
Okay, voting on the amendment to add the new section three. Casagrande?
Yes.
Demas?
Yes.
Cease?
Yes.
Osenga?
Yes.
McClure?
Yes.
Baklan?
Yes.
Mayor Terry?
Yes.
That amendment is approved.
So I think we're ready to call for a vote on the main resolution.
Voting on Resolution 2021-036 as amended, Cease?
Yes.
Baklan?
Yes.
Casagrande?
Yes.
McClure?
Yes.
Demas?
Yes.
Osenga?
Yes.
Mayor Terry?
Yes.
That resolution is approved.
Next on the agenda, oh, I'm sorry, yeah, okay, reminder. So it's nine fifteen, let's come back at nine twenty, and we'll take a quick recess.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Madam Mayor, we're back on the record.
Okay, back on the record.
It is 9:20.
And we have a minute left. At 9:20. The next on the agenda is appoint Orson Smith or Pat Dmitrovich to the Prince William Sound Regional Citizens Advisory Council. So Madam Clerk, could you describe what we have a force and what we need to do?
Yes, so the city was notified by Prince William Sound Regional Citizens Advisory Council that the vacancy for the current representative, Rob Chadwell, would come due in May this year. And Mr. Chadwell notified the city that he was not interested in renewing his seat. So we did a public notice and received a letter of interest from Orson Smith, who previously served as the city's representative, and then received the second letter of interest from Pat Dmitrovich and his interest, and he spoke earlier tonight. So before you is a ballot with both names on it, if you would vote and pass them over. We'll...
Can you sign that?
Yeah, you can do it. If you put your initials on, that's good.
And Councilmember Sees will have to voice vote, is that correct?
Correct. I'll read all the votes aloud and then we'll need a motion.
And Councilmember Sees, I'll have you, I'll have you vote out loud first. And the choices are Orson Smith or Pat Dmitrovich.
I would go with Pat.
Okay, so one vote for Dmitrovich, one vote for Smith, one vote for Dmitrovich, one vote for Smith, one vote for Smith, one vote for Dmitrovich, and one vote for Dmitrovich. So Pat Dmitrovich, excuse me, has four votes and Orson Smith has three votes.
Okay, so at this time, I'll go ahead and make a motion to appoint Pat Dmitrovich to the Prince William, uh, Prince, sorry, Prince William Sound Regional Citizens Advisory Council. And I'll need a second.
I'll second.
Thank you. And Madam Clerk, could you call for the roll, please?
Voting on the appointment, McClure?
Yes.
Casagrande?
Yes.
Demas?
Yes.
Sees?
Yes.
Osanga?
Yes.
Baklan?
Yes.
Mayor Terry?
Yes.
Pat Dmitrovich is appointed.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is discuss amending the mobile vendor permitting process. Thank you, Councilmember Baklan, for bringing this forward, and I'll turn it over to you, sir.
So thank you to Administration and Viana for helping me with putting this together. This was brought forward by a couple citizens, three who recently applied for the mobile vendor permit. I do not have a conflict of interest because I no longer do it anymore happily. It is, it was fun and it was a lot of hard work, and I'm ready to pass the torch on to somebody else who's willing to do it. But I think it's a very honorable profession to do through this process. I want to thank, actually, Councilmember then Butts, who brought it up and, and brought that to council to open up the men, mobile vending and the roving vendor program. And I think that it has been growing and it has been a great attribute to the city to have generating tax dollars in places that are not normally generated. The, who, Pat, Patricia, Pat, who spoke earlier, is investing in her business. And it's kind of hard to do that when you don't have a guarantee that you can have your business there again. When I had my business, I would be at the clerk's office at four in the morning and waiting at her door for her to arrive so that I could get my application stamped. And to have everything hang in the balance of a few minutes of not maybe arriving on time is, it's kind of a lot of anxiety. So by bringing this forward, I think that it would give first refusal rights to people who are in good standing with the city and are following their policies and procedures on the mobile vending permit and program to be able to get their first opportunity at having their permit again. So this is basically just updating that to get them to be able to have that kind of stability for their business, which has been growing. And there was another resolution that had moved it because the application process was a little hard for when, even when I was in it, to get your insurance timed out right. So there was a resolution that came forward with that. And also moving one of the permits that was up on the harbor uplands lower so that it was in a more accessible area, which has worked out for that vendor this year as well. And then adding another spot as well. So I think that it is a easy, you know, no-brainer kind of thing to just really promote business, businesses, small businesses like that where we can, and to just kind of be advocates for them, so.
Can I ask a question? So I like what you're doing here, I think this is great. The only question I have is would it help vendors, like say there's a vendor that's been in good standing for three years, and then someone gives up like a better spot or someone, should there be some sort of clause where current vendors are able to look at the other sites and maybe upgrade if they're able? Would, is that helpful? Would that be too complicated or?
Yeah, and I think right now, I don't think we look even that far in it, which is a great, and I'm glad that we can have the discussion about it because I think more things can come of that and we can work together with Administration and the vendors to, you know, maybe bring something forward. I just wanted to see how amenable council would be to amending these, the, these additions, to see where we can go from there. So I think that is also a great idea if people are, have already been in one place and they want to go to another, if, like, they can transfer over.
That's for sure.
Yeah.
Councilmember Sees?
I just had some questions. I did appreciate Patricia Pat's comments earlier, and it kind of gave me a little more insight as to what was going on here. But I did have concerns about giving someone that has been here the year before or in good standing, as you want to say, and, and not promoting just the fair, I mean, just the ability for new people to come in and say, hey, I want to get a, I want to start a food truck or buy to get, or get, you know, pick, get a spot to hope, to vend my stuff, to sell my stuff. And it just seems like if you're going to give, to me, it just doesn't seem like it's very fair to anybody who's coming in if they're going to sit up here, like you did, at four o'clock in the morning, sitting up here and then, but you're going to get, you know, a spot that's not, not the best. To me, it just seemed like before the additions, it was such a simple application. Just you had to have the time and the effort to get here. And that's, that's...
Councilmember Vice Mayor Baklan or Administration?
So, Madam Mayor, I just, I've just fallen up on things. I think that, you know, if somebody has already started and, and put a bunch of money and get a truck and do all, get all the insurance and everything, I think they should have first right of refusal. And then, you know, if something opens up, then, you know, they could, you know, however it works out. But I think, I think they should have first right of refusal for that position. There's plenty of other roving sites in town, but maybe they're set up for this one location where there's more kids or, or more into their, whatever field they're, you know, part, thing that they're vending. I think the different areas in town, it can be for different types of vendors, so.
Can I ask a clerk a question real quick? So are all the sites that are available filled every year?
No, and I was, actually, when you were done, I was going to ask if we could look at another part of this program that we haven't examined, and that is the site locations. Because some of them are, have no interest in them at all and haven't from the beginning. And people have asked about other locations in town if they could be opened up. And so I was hoping that we might be open to exploring some new, changing out some of the locations.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you to the clerk for bringing that up. I don't know if council would like to do a work session or, and then kind of have people invited into that and kind of talk about all the things that we, we could let, make the program better. I'd like to speak to, I guess, the question that Councilmember Osanga had is just like what the city manager said, that it's hard to invest in your business and make it better if you cannot have stability within that business. So if you can't, and just like Pat has said earlier, like with the Alaska Fair, State Fair, banks can recognize if you have a contract, if you're in good standing. And the, and some people have asked for more, and I said, well, I think this is a good start. So if council's looking, you know, willing to have a work session on kind of amending it. I know that some of the sites, like, are at SMIC, and there are barriers to that as being in that business before, understanding you have to move every day from SMIC, which is hard, to pack up all your stuff and go and, you know, without either leaving the unit there or some, you know, or having to drive it all the way back every day. It's harder, but with the expansions in SMICs, you never know who might want to be there. So I do understand, you know, there's some, some of the places too that are on the campground where there might not work out, so.
So these changes that you are, are more immediate in nature, do those need to come before us first? Like, I don't want a work session to delay some of the more immediate stuff, so what are your...
I guess I would, I, I, you know, I think this is, if we could talk, at least, uh... I would like to make a motion to direct Administration to create a resolution with these changes, and then we can move on from there.
I'll second.
Okay.
And can I make an amendment to the amendment? It's kind of along the same lines. I'd also like to direct Administration to create the, if, if one site moves, then somebody in good standing, I think they can craft something like that.
So the motion in its entirety to include what's stated on, in the agenda statement and also look at the potential of changing sites for previous, however that needs to be.
Yeah, I don't really understand that concept, can we, because that, from a practical standpoint, that doesn't make sense to me.
So base?
So I think what Councilmember Casagrande is saying is if somebody is in one spot and they're in good standing, and somebody is in another spot and they're in good standing, however they choose not to run their business the next year, then it would go, I guess, yeah, that's a little more complicated.
I don't think it's that complicated. Think you would just word it like first right of refusal for up current mobile vendors or previous mobile, mobile vendors from the previous year.
But if two other mobile vendors wanted it, and they were also in good standing and wanted to go there, then what would the process be, I think is what the concerns are.
So they would just have to go through the waiting at 4:00 AM to change?
Yeah, at this point.
I'll just say the renewal part makes sense to me, to have a previous year vendor have their first right. But once a spot is open, it's open for everybody. That's traditionally how we've been doing it. So it's fair game, whoever's there first.
And that's the simplest way, this, I mean, it started getting really super complicated there. And we, and who's going to pay attention to that and who's going to run that is, is the other question. So we don't want to get too deep in the weeds here. It was a nice, simple, little application process to begin with. And I understand that there are people that are established and they would like, and we would like to treat them and give them first right. I understand that. But it just seems like it's a real simple application process and I guess I just, I'm kind of against muddying the waters here any deeper than we have to.
Well, let's go.
I'll just ask a question to Vice Mayor Baklan because you have been through the application process. Is that a correct statement for you? Do you agree it is a very simple application process?
The application process is simple. The process of being here in the morning on that day and what time should I be here? I mean, in other communities, I think when they have hunting permits, don't people camp out there like days in advance, you know? So it could be that, you know, somebody sets up their tent outside the clerk's office for the week before.
So let's pull back and clarify the motion.
Okay, I, I can withdraw my second, just to make it clear, and let's just go with what we have on the table.
So Madam Clerk, what do you have as a motion?
The original motion was to bring forward a resolution to adopt these changes as in the agenda statement.
Uh, Councilmember Sees, do you have any comments?
Yes, I do. Now, like with, uh, Councilmember Vice Mayor Tony, you had to be open only a certain hours because you were in conflict with the other restaurants. Would that still happen if they get downtown, no matter what they're doing?
That's not, that's not amending the hours at all. So the, the hours would still remain the same, 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, let's call for a vote.
Okay, voting on the motion to bring forward a resolution, McClure?
Yes.
Osanga?
Yes.
And Sees?
Yes.
Baklan?
Yes.
Casagrande?
Yes.
Demas?
Yes.
Mayor Terry?
Yes.
That motion is approved.
Now we're on to the fun part, folks. Our next item is...
I guess I would like to...
Go ahead, sorry, sorry, sorry.
I make a motion to see if the council would be amenable to schedule a work session to discuss the other changes that the roving vendors might like to see in the permitting process.
Can we get a written resolution first before we get a work session going, before we even have what we're going to get?
Councilmember or Vice Mayor Baklan?
I just feel if we just wait and push things off even further, they might just get, you never know when we're going to bring it back up. I'd have to make another agenda statement to get it back on, another council meeting, to get another work session scheduled, so.
I'll second your motion.
Thank you.
So this is, so this pertains to this deadline that's passed already for this year, right? March, said February and March, so this is already done for this year? So I don't see a reason to rush this. I think we can schedule a work session after we get the written resolution so we know what we're looking at. I would rather have something in my hands and read it before the meeting before we have a work session. Because if we don't, I mean, we don't even...
Well, in my understanding, the work session will be larger issues than the resolution coming back before us. But, but my point to what you're, I think additionally, would be, I think P&amp;Z have a large part of this. It would be nice to at least have a joint work session with them or give them a chance to look at the locations. Because were they, not to task P&amp;Z, but I, I feel like they were part of the original. Go ahead, Vice Mayor Baklan. Because I don't want to derail what you're doing either. But we could either have a joint work, work session with them or...
I, on one hand, I kind of don't want to task somebody else already who has a lot of things on their plate. And I know that we have a lot of things on our plate, but I think we're at the point now where P&amp;Z has already created the process.
Okay.
And you, you know, either discontinuing the sites that are not working so that there's not more paperwork or more, you know, it just, or just saying, you know, moving spaces or...
What if we schedule something for the first week in May? Is that getting too busy for you? I think that's the other thing maybe you're considering is that your summers are going to be busy.
I can do the first week of May.
Doesn't it have to be on our agenda to schedule a work session? Or is it just simply since we've discussed this, we can now schedule a work session? I just want to make sure we're doing this right. The body has the right to schedule a work session anytime.
Yeah.
Without putting that on.
Yeah.
Or the mayor can do it on her own, two councilmembers.
I mean, I think it was helpful that we definitely at least had this item with agenda statement on this.
So we're not looking at any other places to open up for vendors or where planning and zoning might need to be involved or?
Just to clarify, when the program was created, planning and zoning was involved because there was an ordinance that was enacted that changed city code in the zoning to allow for the program to begin with. And then separately, the resolution was passed to establish the policy and the application process. And that was designed so that council could make updates and changes to it as needed without going back to the zoning issues that were in place. Because they had to settle it out between transient merchants, mobile vendors, and do definitions and...
And for the work session, we could involve the community development director on some examples.
I guess, so one question I had was, we've been talking about tariff changes and doing more outreach to businesses, and I guess just a thought is in advance of a work session, maybe it would be nice to do some sort of business engagement survey so that you guys had some data and some more like specific feedback if the goal is to address concerns from businesses. Maybe Administration can build a survey and at least like present you with the data that you want to collect so that you're not just arbitrarily making these decisions, you're actually remedying any specific concerns or thoughts those participating vendors have. It's actually pretty simple to do.
I really like that idea.
So maybe when we bring that resolution back to council, we'll present you with like that outreach plan?
Does that sound good?
Yeah.
Hold that one free.
And then we can...
You're hired.
What?
You're hired.
Great, thank you very much. Now on the fun part, discuss the results of the second interview with City Manager Candidate Jeanette Bauer and determine next steps. How do we want to kick this off, folks? Comments? Councilmember Osanga?
I thought she was, from what I saw, did together well. I thought she did very well. And I'm looking forward to moving forward with her.
Great, bold move, step it on. I like it. That's great, thank you. Councilmember Sees, I'll let you go next so I don't forget you.
Well, thank you. And I think she did very well too, and I'd like to just move forward.
Thanks. I'm going to go, Councilmember McClure?
I agree, I'd like to move forward with her.
I'll make sure everyone's on the same page. Councilmember Casagrande?
I would agree with everyone. I did get some feedback from constituents that they were disappointed that we only had one candidate, but then also very impressed with the one candidate that we have, as I was as well. So we got lucky.
Councilmember Demas?
Yeah, I would, I mean, agree. I think we ended up with exactly who we should have, and I'm excited about it.
Vice Mayor Baklan?
I enjoyed having dinner with the councilmembers and Administration and Jeanette. And she, I think, is very invested in coming to Alaska and being here. Um, and uh she, I think, is very invested in coming to Alaska and being here. Um, so I am looking forward into the next steps of the process.
Well, looks like we are unanimous, I also would like to move forward with her, so I think we're in a good spot. And I'm very happy um that she came up and and have a chance to meet with uh more citizens. So at this point, um it, are there two folks? Do we want it, I think last time it was two members of council um to appoint for the negotiating team. Did we have three?
One did not show up.
Okay, we can do two or three, um. For the three, they'll just have to be careful and not speak to anyone else, um are there any volunteers? Councilmember Casagrande, okay. Councilmember McClure? Anyone else interested? Councilmember Osenga? Very good. So um what we have is the executive session later and we can talk about maybe parameters. Um, you know, you'll go negotiating with her, but it kinda gives you an idea um of what to negotiate. Councilmember McClure?
We also need to plan to make the offer to her. I mean, she should be informed as soon as possible that we've made this selection, right?
She's wacky.
Well, I, you know, we can assume. There's a formality to that.
Madam Clerk, can we talk about the next steps?
Yeah, that's what I want.
Well, you're you're exactly right, I'm happy to inform Gov HR and uh Jeanette both on your behalf. Um, that she'll be getting contacted by the negotiating team.
Okay, so that will, negotiating team will contact her directly and then our relationship with Gov HR will kinda move to the side or?
Yes, they won't be involved with the direct negotiation, but I'll just.
We can talk about this later, but you will inform the negotiating team members of. The, I mean, you'll set up the the time and stuff?
Uh, for you to, I'm happy to do that, or you can do it directly, it's it's up to you.
Let's let's have the clerk, why don't you work with um the three councilmembers and Jeanette and just coordinate that.
Give you more work to do. Yeah, maybe we could schedule it at lunchtime.
Uh, well, I'll I'll make arrangements if I have to.
Okay.
Okay, any other details at this point? I think that administration is smiling under their mask, so.
Norma.
So I will say, you know, and she rightly so, being the professional that she is. Did let us know that she's gonna have to at the next, uh, you know, provide thirty days notice to her council at their next meeting. Um, so, and I'm sure, you know, she will probably wait until after those negotiations are successful. So um it, we need to get that done soon. And you know, I guess in my opinion, if we need to call a special meeting, I mean, it's three weeks to our next meeting, we should definitely. As soon as that negotiating team has come to agreement, we should call a special meeting and keep this moving forward.
Right.
Correct?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. Anything else we need to discuss? Okay. Um, schedule a work session to discuss new animal shelter, I'll turn that over to administration, I'm sure you have some dates in mind. And what we're gonna be talking about.
So we've spent a fair bit of time just internally working through the, as we've been kinda revitalizing conversations around capital improvement plans. Um, and so our Deputy Police Chief and the Chief of Police Community Development Director. Myself, Norm, had a meeting a couple of weeks ago just to kinda talk about where we go, next steps. Um, and so we'd like to schedule a work session at this point to bring back Shelley. Um, and Carl specifically have put together a mockup of what administration would suggest that we go forward with. Um, as it currently stands, we've got a two point two million dollar animal shelter on our CIP. And administration doesn't believe that that's um necessary. We think we can do, we can meet the needs of the community in a scaled down version. We kinda feel like we have the Taj Mahal built out here and we can probably do with a double wide. And so we'd like to look at a kind of a fifteen hundred square foot footprint um that we can move forward with. Um, like I said, the Deputy Police Chief has done an amazing job, I think you guys will be really impressed with the mockup. I had a chance to look at it the other day, um and really, we'd like to have counsel hear from Shelley, just kinda my my life, forty hours a week. Doing this, and in Shelley's own words, I don't need the Taj Mahal, I need a dramatic improvement from what we've got. Um, my family adopted a cat a couple weeks ago and it was kinda my first experience like really spending time in there and. We do need to do better than what we've got, but we don't need a mansion. Um, Shelley also has some concerns about even if you built the two point two million dollar facility. She goes, I couldn't even keep the thing clean with the amount of staffing we have, so it really doesn't even meet the needs. In, even if we had two million dollars to put forward, so. Administration wants to um set a meeting to kinda talk with council about where we go from here. Um, and just look at something that's realistic, but doesn't necessarily need to be a multi-million dollar facility.
So what dates are you thinking, what would be a good?
Pick a date, we're ready.
Evening meeting?
Maybe we do it right before the next scheduled council meeting, I don't feel like we need to take up you guys' time.
Six o'clock on April twelfth?
Perfect.
Is is forty five minutes gonna be enough, or do we need to say five thirty?
Let's say five thirty.
Five thirty. Five thirty.
There might be public involvement.
Five thirty, April twelfth, animal shelter.
Thank you.
I have one thing to say.
Yes?
If that's, um, would this be the area that you're thinking about, like a double wide? Can it be added on to if we need more space?
I thi- I think he was, he was just making a joke, Cheryl, sorry you're not in the room to catch some of that, I think he was just teasing about the double wide.
Well, you know, they're pretty big, I'm living in one.
It might, it might be a modular, it might be a modular unit, but um I think you, well, you guys will have schematics and ideas. So we'll, we'll, and I think, and you'll have that out in plenty of time for community review.
Well, we'll also talk to Lieutenant about maybe having something that say, yeah, we could add on here, add on here, we can, we can have that done.
That's a good idea.
And the goal would be to go out with a design build RFP of note.
Design bid bill?
Correct.
Yeah.
So it's gonna save us money, save us time, make it more efficient.
Is there already, are there drawings already from a previous idea and has that been completely scrapped? Is this a new idea?
So the current facility, so how we previously, and again, I, Norm and I weren't involved in the process, but just talking with. Those that were involved was, we put out an RFP based off of a four thousand square foot facility and we hired an engineer, I think we spent a hundred. Hundred and fifty thousand ish to have an engineer or an architect design a four thousand square foot facility. And then once we saw the price tag, which was like two hundred, two and a half million, we kinda tried to pull it back. And say, well, let's tone it down, but in a four thousand square foot facility. Just with regulations, we couldn't tone it down anymore than that, so we'd like to go back and just completely. Just start the process from scratch, really, cuz you know, it's not necessary in its current iteration. And I will, during that work session or maybe beforehand, we can give you copies of the current.
Yeah, that'd be cool.
Plans, just so you can take a look at it.
Are we gonna be able to salvage the engineering, hundred and fifty thousand dollar engineering tab on that?
Vice Mayor Baklan?
Um, so I guess my question is, uh, moving forward and maybe it's for the work session, but. The, it would still be moving. To the new location.
Correct. Yes.
And could you bring us in the work session? It, I know that that's next to or adjacent to like Public Works Building. It, would that then, that lot or that little area be sold and then is that, you know? What, what, what's gonna happen with that is my question?
Subject, yeah, once we get this moved and then we can bring that back, it could be sold, it could be part of, you know, Public Works, I mean, it could be part of that land.
Is that a lot or is that, it is one lot?
Yeah, but I think it's so, I think it's part of the Public Works, I'm not, I have to look at the plaque to make sure, but I think it's just all part of Public Works.
I'm just wondering, like, offsetting the cost, like what, you know, in total, in the grand scheme of things. If it might soften the blow a little bit.
We could look at that, see if it is platted, I'm not exactly sure.
Thank you.
Um, but I just have one quick question. On the, then the property where the animal shelter is, is that something that we would look at doing the same where the Public Works Building is right now? Just selling that off, subdividing it?
Just that one, if it is a lot, just sell that one lot to pay for. To pay for the new animal shelter, I guess.
So let's check and see what that looks like. And and where it might, I'd like to see just an overview of where, where, how the building might go on that property as well.
So that's one of the questions that we brought up in our meeting was that we could actually uh give the building towards um. The generators or buffer the sound from the animals, it'd be like, you know, it'd be a buffer, they gotta have the yard a different area. And it buffers the sound, so that was one thing we looked at.
Any other questions surrounding that work session? Councilmember Casagrande?
On this particular item, are we going to have? And I'm sorry if there's already one scheduled, a work session to talk about all of the Fort Raymond land? What we're doing, so we have a plan for everything, instead of piecemealing like chunk by chunk?
I think they're working on that within that other request, so I think this is separate and this is off that Fort Raymond.
This is at Fort Raymond, yeah.
The new animal shelter isn't Fort Raymond?
No.
It's on the other side of Fort Raymond, okay.
It's on the other side of the electrical.
Right, okay.
I think your question about the area, I think they they are working on something to bring something back.
Okay, thank you.
Next on the agenda, update on the RFP responses for the forensic audit, discuss the possibility of removing the line loss from the requirements and re-advertising. I'll turn it over to administration.
So Madam Mayor, we uh, we went up RFP, we gave out eleven? Ten uh requests for the RFP, we got one return and you all, you all seen it. Um, it's, the price tag is pretty high, um and but they, in this, in the response, they did not. Um, talk about line loss and um some of the questions from a another couple of other firms was. We can't, we don't have nobody in our firm that does line loss. So um depending on how council wants to proceed, um we could go back out to RFP, remove the line loss factor in there. Go back out or whatever council decides they want us to do with that. Uh, I think that the price tag might be maybe a little lower or the same, don't know. But just bring it back to see how you like to proceed.
Council wishes, Councilmember Casagrande?
So in our meeting that we had with administration, one of the things that administration pointed out is it felt like there was an anticipated ten bidders. And and the line loss question is what trickled them all off, so I have no problem going back out for RFP. And dropping the line loss, and I think that once the, whoever ends up. You know, getting the bid and if we vote to initiate the bid, um hire the bidder, the best bidder. Um, we can then briefly explain to them what line loss we're actually talking about. Cuz it's not a scientific breakdown, it's just the overall number, so, yeah.
Go ahead, I mean, I'll just.
Well, I just, I, how much did it cost for going out to RFP and would we be duplicating that cost?
Hey, we advertised in two locations that we had to pay for and a couple that weren't a B, but we paid two hundred dollars for the sewer journal. And two thousand eight hundred for AVM.
That was my question, thank you.
I think spending an additional three thousand dollars to find a good bid is is saving. A lot of money in the long run because we don't wanna just take one bidder. And not know that there could be other possible um better priced bids. And like Norm said too, if this was any other bidder, if they left out a part of the required RFP, it would have been thrown out anyways. So I think that um, you know, the thing that we have before us is either we just decide. To take the RFP that's before us, even though it should be counted as non-responsive, but there's, you know, reasons why that. Or we spend another three thousand dollars to go back out for RFP, or we just drop the whole thing altogether and just decide that. We don't need a forensic audit, which I don't support number three, um but I could support number one or two.
Councilmember Osenga, then I'll go to administration.
Um, I was just going to ask, was there any? Any hint at just going out for another RFP with a little bit tweaking down to it that? The um cost is looking like it might go down significantly, or are we looking at a general ballpark of the same amount that we're looking at now?
To be frank, we don't know for two reasons, one, the only other thing I was just gonna point out is, so if you look at page seventeen. In their response. Phase three is supplemental analysis, and I had a chance to talk to our audits, auditors, since they're here as well as Jen about that. Just to get get an inquiry because they didn't even list the number of hours associated with the supplemental analysis. And I asked Jen and Grant, is there like an industry standard, can we assume like thirty percent or something? And they said basically what they're asking us to do is write a blank check because. Who knows, it just depends on how far, basically, you know, the analysis part could be fifty percent, it could be a hundred percent of the total hours of. The rest of the audit, and so this bid that we have in front of us is really not, it doesn't even meet the requirements listed in the RFP. So it, I guess in my mind, just examining it, it's um, it's a little ridiculous to be kind. Because it, it didn't even actually meet the requirements that we listed. And at minimum, just if you take the hours and you do the math, you're looking at four hundred and seventy six thousand dollars as a base. And that's without any supplemental analysis, so.
And three percent.
Yeah, plus the three percent administrative fee.
And then I know that we had um some uh, some firms from Alaska that were, that sent in, requested the RFP, so. I don't know, this firm isn't from Boston, I don't know, you know, the travel and all that other things, but we, it could be lower with some firms from the state, we don't know. It's, it's just, we don't know, it's.
Councilmember Demas?
Of the ten people, of the ten firms that requested RFPs, do we, do we know how they, where they saw the ad?
Say that again?
Do, do we know how they found out about the RFP? I'm just wondering if we need to advertise an ADN again.
I, I, I imagine the local, the ones from the, I'm sorry.
Oh, no.
The ones from the, the state, I imagine they read it in the ADN.
I'm wondering if it wouldn't hurt just to send those same firms the revised RFP.
Um, I think that might, we might get in trouble by directing at certain firms, so we need to advertise.
Never mind, bad idea, thanks.
That's fine.
I guess I feel like we're in for a penny even for a pound, if we go, I don't have a problem with going out one more time, taking out the line loss and see what we get back. I mean, if we get the same result back, then we just know it's kind of an unobtainable um question that we're asking potentially. But going out one more time, and I think if we advertise and also send the revised RFP to those ten, then we know that we've covered. I feel good about that.
So just for clarity, so we're gonna remove, remove line loss, council doesn't wanna see this again, you want the administration to send us out as quickly as possible? And we'll follow the same protocol that we did last time?
As long as you remove the line loss.
Yeah, correct, I just wanna check that we're.
And and the, the. The process that we before worked out, by notifying what we're doing, everything was good?
I thought it was great, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So, but you said send to the ten, we're not gonna send the original ten, right?
We're just gonna re-put it back into paper like we did before.
So we're not sending it to any group?
You can, you can advertise and then resend it to those ten, that's totally.
Send a notice to those ten.
Yeah, send a notice. Send it, not send out a P, but once you advertise, you can send the notice to ten people.
Okay, that's fine, that's what I was asking, I just, cuz it was. Earlier, there was comments being made about, that's probably not.
I think it's, I think the comment earlier was just going back, adjusted those ten.
Okay, got you, thank you for that clarification, appreciate it.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so uh also in the packet, are the city and Providence financials, are there any questions or comments regarding those? I could see um finance updated and clarified some of the financials. Um Prince William sounded regional citizens advisory board meeting highlights, any questions or comments? Next on the agenda, citizen comments, are, is there anyone signed up for citizen comments?
I don't have anyone signed up and no one has their hand raised.
Council and administration comments in response to citizen comments, I'll start with the administration.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, um, so start off, you know, I'll be out of the office here, um, coming this Wednesday, I'll be out for like five days, including the holiday. And Stephen will be acting city manager with full signing authority.
And I want to congratulate Pat Demetrius for on the board. And, and councilmember Costagrande asked about the water meters. And I got a note back that we're 90% done. And then, when the new meters go in, then to the non-metered customers, they will be inspected and recorded. And, that's it. Thank you.
Councilmember Cease, I'll start off with you.
No, I just want to congratulate Pat for being on the, the new board. And also, thank you very much to the Northern Edge presentation. That was very interesting. And I will be back for that, so I'm excited. And I guess that's it. Just thanks to everybody for your comments.
Councilmember Casagrande?
I'd like to first thank Vice Mayor Baklan for all your hard work in working with the vendors and being dedicated to that program. To have someone like you that's already been through the processes is invaluable. And the whole mobile vendor is also such a great seed for small business. You know, it's a great place for somebody to start and to generate economic development in corners of Seward that we had not looked before. So, thank you for keeping councilmember Butt's motivation going with all of that. And I'm looking forward to being part of the negotiating team for the new city manager and looking forward to reliving Norm of his amazing duties that he's been performing. Happy Equinox to everybody. We're there. We're actually back in balance now of day and light, supposedly, so that's really exciting. To address a citizen's comment that we all received by email of Mr. Steve Lear about Fort Raymond and his concern of what's going on, how is this happening? I just want to reiterate once again, everything that's going on with the land at Fort Raymond kind of feels clunky. And, and I'm hoping that what administration is going to bring forward to us is more of a public process, not just what's happening, but also a public process of how the public can become part of this land and really addressing that citizen comment. Also, thank you to the mayor and councilmember Osanga for bringing Seward elected officials to a higher standard of ethics. And congratulations to Pat. And thank you to Orson Smith for putting your name in the hat. I know for all of us, it's an act of courage and willingness to be able to run for any board or commission. So, thank you, not just to Orson, but to all volunteers, because it's what makes a community strong. So, thank you.
I want to thank the Seward Sports Association and Parks and Rec for bringing that resolution to the table. I think it was the right thing to do. I feel good about that. And SSA is awesome and I'm just really glad our community has them. I also want to remind folks, and it's probably nearing the end of, end of the winter for this, but you can rent gear from Parks and Rec on Thursday and return it on Tuesday and have it for the whole weekend, so you can have the ice skates and sleds and snowshoes and all of that stuff, you know, for the whole family if you, if you don't already. And then, I also wanted to thank Vice Mayor Baklan for bringing the mobile vendor discussion to the table. That's huge and it's just really good for business and it's really good for businesses, especially mobile vendors. Like councilmember Casagrande was saying, they're usually just starting out. So, to have a resource like you to, that they feel comfortable going to and can get their questions answered is huge. So, thanks for being on top of that. And then, thank you to administration and our clerk for taking Jeanette under your wing and organizing dinner for all of us and everything. I think that was, I think she had a really nice time and so, I just think that had a lot to do with you guys and I appreciate that. So, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Osanga?
I'd like to thank everybody for the presentations today, Northern Edge and Cape Ed. Congratulations to Pat. I'd also like to say, good job to Beals for his finish in the Iditarod. I think for 23rd or 25th. And then, also, congratulations to Dallas for, in another championship in the CB Clan. Congratulations to that family. Everyone, please be safe out there. That's it.
Okay, well, I received, interestingly, just in the past few days, several compliments that I was asked to pass on to Public Works about street maintenance this winter. They just felt that it's been a rough winter and they've done a very good job. So, I'm passing that along and I hope somebody from that department is listening. Also, earthquake anniversary day is Saturday. And I'd like to suggest that people be aware that it could happen anytime and you might want to make a plan of food availability and water and things like that. Because I've, last meeting I mentioned, I would tell my story if people call and people have called. So, I've been telling my story over and over and over this week, which prompts me to say, it helps if you were like my parents and had lots of canned food in the basement and knew how to find water and this and that, you know, so. Anyway, you never know. Also, thanks to everyone that organized, the clerk and the administration organized Jeanette's trip up here and our meetings with her. That was really useful. And it was also nice to be in, I guess it's the lobby room area of the new hotel. That was very, very nice too. And I think that we accomplished quite a bit today and I think we worked well together. And thank you to the council and mayor for that.
Vice Mayor Baklan?
I want to thank all my councilmembers for their dedication and hard work to the council and the people of Seward. And I thank administration for their hard work. We missed Hile after a fun-filled week. Working hard. I would like to say, with the mobile vendor program, that is just, it's a great program for anyone to get started. And I'm really excited and thankful for council to be amenable to some of those changes, because I think we can really move with those and expanding that program a little bit more and getting more, you were always looking for ways to put a gate on something or make more money. And that's one way that's, you know, was really a fun and a lot of hard work, but something that really did well, I think, for the community, especially at late night. So, I thank the people who are moving forward with applying for that permit and providing that, that's really a service to the community, because there's really not much to eat, you know, late at night. And so, yeah, and I would like to, I want to say thanks to Jeanette for coming down and it was very nice meeting her. I really appreciated her sincerity. I thought she was very genuine when I met her. So, I'm glad that we had that opportunity to meet her in person. I think that was very important. So, yeah. And congratulations to SSA and their efforts and hopefully have lots of games this summer.
I just want to thank Tim Dillon for all that he does for Seward, just a good friend of Seward and we appreciate that. And then, this next comment is a little silly. You know, I just want to remind people that they can listen to the meetings on the radio at 91.7. They can watch on YouTube, they can watch on Facebook. And the reason why it's silly is because if you're not watching or listening on one of those media, you might have been hearing me say that. But, you know, just a reminder for the community on how to tap into not only our meetings, but to Port Commerce Advisory Board, Planning and Zoning, and also HP. And then, just finally, I want to wish everyone, actually, two more things. Happy Seward's Day and the city offices will be closed on March 29th in honor of Seward's Day. And then, also, happy Easter to the community. So, with that, we are going to go, does anyone need a break before executive session? I'm gonna make a motion to go into executive session to discuss the negotiation strategy for the city manager hire and that will just be reflected to council. And so, we'll get a vote on that.
Do we have a second?
Last second.
Thank you. Voting to move into executive session. Osanga?
Yes.
Cease? Oh, she can't. She can't attend. Does she drop?
She drops.
Okay. She won't be able to attend. Ms. Clerk?
Yes.
Casagrande?
Yes.
DeMoss?
Yes.
Baklan?
Yes.
And Mayor Terry?
Yes.
That motion is approved.
And just to remind folks, we won't come out of that to say anything. We're gonna keep those negotiations within that executive session, so we won't go back on social media. But the clerk will come back in and those, anything said will be recorded in a minute. So, I'm gonna go ahead and call our executive session.